Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It is Wednesday, March 29th, 2023, and I call to order this regular session of the City of Bloomington Common Council. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll for us?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Scambalory?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Volin.
We'll begin with our land and labor acknowledgement. We recognize that the City of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. We'll continue with an agenda summation. We have no minutes to approve this evening. We'll then move into a time of reports, including council member reports, and then reports from the mayor and city offices. I'll note that the sidewalk, side path, and paving data report has been postponed. The department is waiting for some additional information before they present to us. We will go ahead, though, with an update report on Bloomington Capital Improvements, Inc., then a report on staff recommendations regarding scooters and micro mobility options. We'll then hear any reports from council committees, and then move to our first period of public comment. We'll then move to appointments to boards and commissions. We have no legislation for second readings and resolutions. We have two items, two items of legislation for first readings, including appropriation ordinance 23-01 to specially appropriate the current balance of the opioid settlement fund to help address the impacts of the opioid crisis on city and county residents, and appropriation ordinance 23-02 to specially appropriate funds from the general fund for construction of the Trades District Tech Center and associated construction management services. We will then move into our second of two periods of public comment. We'll then take up matters of council schedule, and then we'll adjourn. With that, let's move into council member reports. I'll start on my far left. Councilmember Volin?
I need to have Mr. Lucas put a slide up, so if I could defer to the next report.
Are you doing that now?
Yeah, I'm good. It's going to take me a minute, so if other people could report a bit.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I just want to say March is National Disability Awareness Month. Yeah, and I think we all need to recognize that. That was first declared in 1987 by Ronald Reagan. So let's keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple things. And one thing, I just want to remind everyone that's on Zoom and those here present, and I know I don't have to remind anyone of this, but vote, vote, vote. I go to a lot of these forums. I'm still interested in hearing from our candidates or those who wish to be elected. And that is the best way, I think, us as the public can determine who we might think is the best person to fill those positions. So I would encourage you to attend those. I would encourage you to get in touch with the candidates. But most importantly, I would encourage you to vote, vote, vote. One other thing, we, as many of you know, we just had another school mass shooting. Very sad, and my heart goes out to the families and those affected. There was a couple meetings ago, and my dear colleague, Councilmember Isabel Piedmont Smith, said something to the effect of praying and thoughts don't really matter in these situations. And we talked a little bit after that, and I said, you know, Isabel, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, I said, why would you not say anything about praying? Because that gives people encouragement. It gives people hope. I guess the point of my message this evening is that I think my council colleague is exactly right. Praying and having good thoughts is what we need to do. We have to offer encouragement and hope, but it is not enough. And I hope that message can resonate with our federal people, even some of our state people. But that in and of itself, it's necessary, and I will do it. But to quote her, "It is not enough." Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
I have no report.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I want to echo what my colleague, Councilmember Sims, said, how important it is to vote. You can check your voter registration at indianavoters.com. If you are not yet registered, you have until 5:00 PM on Monday to register in order to vote in the primary election. You can do that as well at indianavoters.com or at the local voter registration office, which is at the corner of Madison and Seventh Street, right around the corner here. And the League of Women Voters has an excellent website where you can see who's going to be on your ballot and find out about all the candidates. That is at vot411.org. I also want to affirm that the rights of LGBTQ+ individuals are human rights, the rights of trans people are human rights, and the majority in the Indiana General Assembly is taking away human rights. And we must stand firm and fight for the rights of our trans neighbors, our trans Hoosiers in this terrible discriminatory climate. This is not just a matter of people living the gender that they believe they are. This is often a matter of life or death. If you feel you are forced to live in a gender that does not match how you feel, that can be the end. The suicide rate for trans teenagers is alarmingly high. And so the state legislature has once again disappointed me and disappointed our community and tried to curtail the rights of Hoosiers across the state. So we must keep fighting, contact the governor, and urge him to not sign to veto the legislation Senate Bill 480 that just passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. I echo the concerns of Councilmember Sims when he mentions the most recent mass shooting. I think many of us who remember the terrible incident in Columbine, I mean, that was shocking in and of itself, but since then, there have been a number of mass shootings in this country that I keep thinking, that's got to be the one. You know, Sandy Hook, that's got to be the one. Virginia Tech, that's enough is enough. We must take action. And when we think of this particular shooting in Nashville, having a red flag law enacted could very well have prevented those six deaths, three children, three staff members. And thoughts and prayers clearly are not enough, and it is time for the nation to examine its conscience and accept the fact. We have a gun problem, and we have an inaction problem. We're all horrified with each incident of mass shootings, and I hope I never stop being shocked by them. I hope they don't just become so commonplace that, oh, well, there's another one. But unfortunately, that's what it feels like when our Congress refuses to take action. And I would just encourage those who feel as saddened as I am that this continues in America, and very little is being done about it. There seems to be no political will at the national level to take incremental steps, small steps even, to prevent the next mass shooting from occurring. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thank you. No report tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's come back to Councilmember Volin?
Yes, thank you. First, I just wanted to point out that the deadline to register to vote on Monday is at the close of business at the local clerk's office. It's 5:00 PM at the Indiana Election Division. So I hope nobody goes after 4:00, only to discover that the clerk's office is closed. So I think it's 4:00 on Monday. But I wanted to talk about, you can put that slide up now, I want to talk about something different. I have been concerned, as the District 6 representative, about the Community Revitalization Enhancement District, or the CREED, for my entire career. It was formed in 2003, tweaked in 2004, and it's been collecting taxes, I think, for 15 years or so. We haven't really done much with that fund, and there's now $10 million in that fund. We're going to be hearing from the administration, who's asked for $3 million, who's going to be asking for $3 million to build the new Trade Center tech building. But, and that's a more appropriate use of that money than for a police and fire headquarters. But it's still, I have often thought about what that money should be used for. I do believe that it should be used to improve and upgrade ancient and aging electrical and utility infrastructure in the Courthouse Square District. But I've long also talked about a downtown circulator. It was first pitched in 2007 and '08, and BT did a study on it. They updated that study 10 years later, and at my request this year, they updated it one more time with current costs. But I am going to be proposing that we allocate $5 million from the CREED fund to establish a downtown circulator. $4 million approximately would be to purchase three electric buses, two of which would run the route routes, and one of which would be in backup. That would also cover the cost of up to 16 shelters that would be placed all around the routes. What you're looking at up here is a route that involves, it's actually two routes, a north-south route and an east-west route that goes between Kirkwood, goes down Kirkwood to 7th. The north-south route goes between College and Walnut with a 20-minute interval. And the estimates you see here, which, again, I'll be circulating tonight or after the meeting, along with a memo describing this idea, and it would cost anywhere between $400 and $100,000 and $1 million a year to operate. And the $5 million would also allow it one year's worth of operation. The soonest that BT could mount such a service would be no sooner than August of '24, but we would have about two years to figure out another source of revenue. For my money, the best source of revenue to keep such a service going would be an increase, a necessary increase in revenue from parking meter rates. There are quite a few blocks of downtown that have been overpriced for the 10 years that we've had meters back in service, and there are quite a few blocks that are underpriced, that the demand for those blocks has not abated despite the fact that we are now charging $1 an hour. Based on the most recent numbers that we looked at when we were considering the closure of Kirkwood in last month, the amount of revenue that could be raised from a 50-cent increase in, an average increase in revenue would more than pay for this service. So while this is still very early days, I want everyone to be thinking about it because I think it's time that we do something to serve the district that was taxed since 2003. And that this would, unlike any other project we've heard about so far, would serve the entire, would serve the entire CREED district, would be connecting several disparate points. This pair of routes and any other route we've contemplated would connect the Trades District to the Hopewell District. It would connect the Convention Center and the Courthouse and the IU sample gates. And this particular map even serves part of the IU campus, but whether it's the corner of 10th and Woodlawn or the circle at the IU auditorium, I think that it's about time that we did a fare-free trolley-like downtown bus service that circulates around downtown, that connects every parking garage in town with every point of interest in the center of town, which is now greater downtown. I've started calling this the Greater Downtown Circulator because it takes 20 minutes now to walk from the Trades District to the Kroger on the south side of this map, and it takes 20 minutes from either of those points to walk to the sample gates. So that is well beyond the amount of time that the average pedestrian would walk before looking for another form of transportation. It would serve everyone equally, and it would be a tremendous boon to every user of downtown, both individual and institutional. So I'm hoping that there will be support in the administration and the council for this service. There's going to be some hard work to get the numbers to make it viable after year one, but I know that the statute that governs the use of this money allows for both the acquisition of this equipment, the acquisition of the shelters, and the operation of the bus for at least one year. So with that, I hope that, I'll be circulating the memo momentarily, and I'm looking forward to feedback from all my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll finish up council member reports with, by extending an invitation to my constituent meeting. It is coming up this coming Saturday, April 1st. No kidding. It will be at a different time, though. It will be at 11:00 AM. Usually, it's at 1:30. It will be at 11:00 AM via Zoom. The link is available on my website at suforcitycouncil.com. And that will actually just connect you. There's just a button you click on that says "Join." So, okay. That concludes council member reports. We'll next move to reports from the mayor and city offices. I believe we have Mayor Hamilton with us to speak about the Capitol, excuse me, Bloomington Capital Improvements, Inc. So, please.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you all. Good evening. I am here kind of responding to some of your requests and points and questions about the CBCI, City of Bloomington Capital Improvement. Happy to engage in that with you. I know one issue I wanted to let you know from the beginning, looking at the recording from last time. We are happy to and expecting to ask the CBCI board to adjust the appointment of vacancies, which was one of the issues you raised, seeking to have not the, the current bylaws suggest, dictate that the remaining members, if there's an unexpected vacancy, appoint the member to fill out that term. We're happy, and I expect, we have a meeting next week, expect they can change that to have any unexpected vacancy be filled by the entity that was originally responsible for appointing that seat. So that's fine. I also want to thank you for appointing a wonderful member to that board. They have met once and will be meeting next week and are beginning their work in earnest, in particular on Hopewell. And we're very pleased with the prospect of engaging with them. And I thought I'd just open it up for questions and back and forth.
Did you want to, before we go into questions, did you want to share the date and time of the meeting that's coming up?
Sure. It is, let me just double-check I get it exactly right. It is next Wednesday, I believe. April 5th, yeah, Wednesday at 4:00 in the Allison Conference Room, it appears. That's a public meeting, of course, open to anyone. 4:00 next Wednesday, April 5th.
Thank you.
And it'll be posted, as usual, too.
Thank you. And let's come to council for questions. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, thank you. How will the board derive funds?
Well, there's a lot still to be worked out, but generally, that board will look to be supported one of two ways, primarily, well, three, let's say. One would be directly from the Redevelopment Commission, on behalf of the Redevelopment Commission. Two would be from the city budget. We have already been relying on contract expenses to provide support for some of these projects like Hopewell, and those could be transferred to the nonprofit. And then next year's 2024 budget could have a request in it for a direct appropriation or appropriation through some part of city budget. Those would be the main ways, I think. They eventually could receive revenue from operations or property that they own that they, if they do become an owner of property, that they could earn money off of, too.
Okay. May I continue with that? So, well, let's address that last point. So it seems there will be property transfers from the city to the board. Is that correct?
Have, we don't know that at all. Could be.
That's possible.
That's possible.
Okay. And what role will the council have in terms of oversight?
Yeah, I think it's a really good general question about the council's oversight role. I think it's important, the basic point, I would say, is that the council's prerogatives and roles are only increased with the operation of a nonprofit because it in no way can change the council's authority over the budgets, ownership, et cetera, that we have now. And it only increases it because the council now has a seat at that board, which, without the nonprofit, is really just operating inside the city administration. So any authority the council has two months ago over property, funding, et cetera, it remains.
Okay, just one other brief question. So say a budget time, there is a line item for the funding of the CBCI, and that includes various expenditures related to, say, funding various nonprofits or certain facilities and things of that sort. Will the council have discretion, perhaps I need to include their counsel attorney here, discretion to remove items from that budget? Or will it come as a simple, as a single appropriation within that budget? Will it be itemized?
Well, I don't know any specific plans, but I would say this, just as right now, we are appropriating funds to contractors to help with the Hopewell Development, for example. That was in the budget that went before you last fall, indicating in a category three, I guess, whatever contracts, that that was what the intended use was. So it would be identical to that, I think, in terms of budget.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims, and then Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. My question may not be that substantive, and I'll have many, many more once the app board comes before us. So, thank you. And I also agree with you that this board, in fact, appointed a wonderful board member to be a part of that. But one of the things that I'd like to bring up, and for you to think about, or the board or someone, and I've been talking about this right from the beginning, what are the chances that we can, instead of going four administrative, one council, to three and two? And not to put you on the spot or anything, but I think moving forward, not so much oversight, but I think that would be a good effort, I think, to smooth some things and help some things move along. So, and I know there's probably been no more thoughts on that, but I thought I'd raise that tonight, so.
Well, I appreciate you raising it. We have discussed that before. I'm happy to just briefly share a couple thoughts about it. But again, and I sent this in a memo to y'all and the public early January, I think, 10 weeks ago or so, that explained the, kind of the choice and the dilemma of, do we keep doing this in-house with the demands on our staff and our departments from economic stain development to controller to legal to, you know, Public Works to parks and engineering and everybody? And simply expand our capacities there with staff and contracts, which is what we've been doing in these projects? Or do we create a nonprofit to do it? And I, as in that memo, outlined the reasoning to look at a nonprofit. And I guess the simple thought pattern for me, and again, you know, I'm looking long-term for the mayor and the responsibility of the mayor, that this is a very, very direct operational kind of entity on behalf of the administration that, again, right now is done completely internally, and to be sure that whoever the mayor is has the authority and the ability to really manage the direction of that. I guess I, so that's where the 5-0 or 4-1 are trying to make sure that whoever the mayor is has that kind of authority to manage and be responsible for delivery. I would note that the boards and commissions that we have, there are a number of them in a similar kind of posture, where an entity that is very responsible for coordinating, overseeing, implementing administration and city policy is a fully mayor-appointed board. I mean, you've, the Public Safety Board, which, of course, very important oversight and direct control in some ways of our police and fire, is a five-person board, all appointed by the mayor. The Public Works Board, which meets here and is considered the head administrative entity of the city, is a three-person board, all appointed by the mayor. Parks Board, which oversees the Parks Department and implementing all that, is a four-person board, all appointed by the mayor. Of course, there are other boards and different setups. So I think we've seen a number, and this is my judgment of one way, but I do look forward to continued conversation about it.
Thank you. And I wasn't around. I don't know if any of my colleagues were around when any of those other boards or commissions were formed and created and the structure. And that's fine. I don't have any real issue with those. But back to this one. Would you feel the administration would have less authority with a three-to-two structure as opposed to a four-to-one?
Marginally, yes.
I guess I don't understand that.
Well, just the difference between four members that a mayor will appoint and that will be directly accountable in a way to them versus three. Just, you know, there's some difference in that. If, I mean, I assume you think there's a difference between one and two.
You mean, three and two?
The difference between the county, the city council having one versus two, you view as significant. And I'd say similarly, there's a difference.
As far as administratively, I don't see much, but I do see perception-wise, community acceptance. This council hears acceptance and buy-in to all that, and that's kind of what I'm getting at. And last question, if I may. This is the four, the one, and we got the one. And if the other four, or three and two is not as, there's not as much authority as four and one, if you look at them as individually, does the council appointment have less than, individually than the other four? If it's an authority thing, so I don't understand three and two versus four and one, and you still have the majority. But again, and you don't even have to respond to that. I just want to think about, we'll talk about that more, but that's just what I'm thinking about.
Appreciate it. Look forward to talking about it, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg, and then Councilmember Volin?
Thank you. That was my question as well. I think that was my suggestion when we were talking. Would it be feasible, would this board consider, and would you consider adding two more appointments that the council could then appoint? I was very much thinking that was a good idea to help balance. There are several venues on the table that this nonprofit will manage. Two of them are related directly to the arts. And you have appointed four excellent people. We have appointed one excellent person. But I'm thinking what's missing with respect to the fact that the Waldron and the Buskirk-Chumley Theater are also on the table as being city-owned buildings, city-owned facilities, if you will, that are directly related to the arts, that it might behoove this committee to have a few more people on there that have that sensibility and that expertise with the arts community. And so I would be very much in favor of that, and also just kind of in good faith to kind of tipping the balance between, you know, the two branches of government, the executive branch and this council. This is my last year on this council, but I fully support the idea of having a better balance, of having you appoint four and the council appoint three. The mayor still has the majority, but the balance of community representation, I think, would be better served. So I hope that the board or you will consider that. I think it's still a good idea, and I would like to see a few more people appointed that, again, would be good caretakers of our incredible arts venues in the downtown, the Waldron and the Buskirk-Chumley, that we want to keep viable well into the future. So, thank you for considering that.
Thank you. Councilmember Councilmember Volan.
Right. Well, I think that there is a substantive concern echoed by my colleagues, but it has to do with the bylaws. And we were not, did not have a hand in the making of the bylaws. That was done by, apparently, the first four who were appointed before we appointed ours. Do the bylaws for the new CBCI have any provision for decisions that must be made by a supermajority vote?
The provisions in the bylaws, and I apologize, I'm not a complete expert on those bylaws. The main thing that has been baked in so far to the bylaws is a protection against changing the number of, or the makeup of the board by the board itself, changing its public accountability, the compliance with the open-door law cannot be done without the approval of, I think, both the mayor and the council. They don't have, I don't believe, a provision that you're referencing, but the bylaws can be adjusted. And in fact, as I said, I think they'll be adjusted at the next meeting on that appointment clause.
Well, I'm encouraged to hear that, but my concern is that, number one, there should be some, I mean, is, the rhetorical question that my colleagues are asking is, is the one member a meaningful member? Now, you have said that, well, we certainly have more oversight than we did. This is true. But how meaningful is it? I note that 80% of the board is named by the mayor, and there's no circumstance in any kind of other organization where more than two-thirds vote is necessary for a supermajority. So, the supermajority of members of this board are appointed by the mayor, and I think that whether it's three-to-two, as Councilmember Sims suggested, or four-to-three, as Councilmember Sandberg has suggested, either way, there would still be a majority appointed by the mayor, and most decisions would be, the mayor's appointees would have a majority when that was an issue. But when it came time for, I mean, there would be, it would be a meaningful membership appointed by the council if we knew that there were certain decisions that could only be made with a supermajority vote. And that's either five out of seven or four out of five. So, you know, the fact that we had no hand in the preparation of the bylaws is a concern to us. Many of the boards that Councilmember Sims mentioned were required by state statute, the Board of Public Works, the Board of Public Safety. So, I mean, we weren't supposed to have a hand in it, but this is a body where, I mean, you've been saying that you want us to have a hand in it, but we're concerned about the meaningfulness of that hand. So, I would ask what you would say to these concerns, these more specific concerns.
Well, I'm happy to hear them. We don't have any supermajority requirements, so that ratio of whether it's 80 or 60 is not affected by that. But I just did want to check, the amendment to the bylaws are generally by a majority, with the exception that I mentioned of any change to the composition number or appointment of directors must be approved by the council and the mayor, or any change to the transparency of their meetings and records. Now, I appreciate that, I would just want to note that we shared the draft bylaws in January with you all and welcomed feedback, got some feedback. They've certainly been public for 10 weeks now and welcomed suggestions about it, but they were shared in draft form to get comment about them.
I mean, the comment is sort of moot if the point is that it doesn't matter what's in the bylaws if there's no, I mean, it was stated from the get-go that there was going to be four and one. Again, council has no meaningful input in this body.
Well, I guess I would, I appreciate your point. I think the only thing I would say is, again, noting that council has more access with this body today than if this body were not created. Council has all of the authority that you've had before in terms of financing, effect on the Hopewell development or the arts community and the arts facilities. Your authority has not been diminished in any way, and in fact, has been enhanced in the sense that you now get to appoint a person who previously, all of this was done inside the administration. I think, you know, we can think about it differently, and I'm happy to continue to talk about it, but this is really a board to help execute administration responsibilities and not an advisory board. And in that regard, my judgment, which you may certainly differ on, is that having direct and important accountability is important for effectiveness. But look forward to keep talking about it. And after all, you can decline to fund it if you think it shouldn't be funded for those reasons.
Well, I would suggest that there is a, at least a nominal, if not a significant difference between, I mean, first of all, is it correct that the CBCI will have monetary authority, authority to vote on approval of a purchase or of a, of any kind of, I mean, it's going to have a budget, won't it?
I expect it will have a budget, doesn't yet have any budget, but I expect it could.
And are we going, I mean, it's going to certainly have ownership of these properties, right?
I don't know that. I mean, another example maybe to help think about is, a few weeks ago, the Redevelopment Commission entered into a contract with the Mill Board of Directors, which is a separate nonprofit that neither of us appoints people to, that the mayor sits on, and the Redevelopment Commission entered into a contract with that entity to do a number of things on behalf of the RDC and at the request of the administration, to help move the Trades District forward. That's another kind of relationship between a nonprofit and that public board. I think that funding happened through the RDC. Again, if the city were to look to provide direct funding to the CBCI, you know, it would all be transparent in a contract and maybe services to market the Hopewell, just for example, that kind of thing.
Okay. So, I mean, there is going to be, it's very likely that the CBCI will be involved in the development of Hopewell.
Yes, I think so. I hope so.
I mean, with all due respect, I think that this was a missed opportunity at best to directly involve council in a word that has been much bandied about and poorly understood, which is oversight. If you're saying that the council has a veto over what the CBCI does, that may be true in, effectively, in the form of voting on financial matters, but it's still asking to get on our already complicated agenda. The politics are different than if you were to have oversight that was built into the management of the CBCI. And I think what I'm hearing from my colleagues is that if you were to do what we suggested, we would have less concern over and less, frankly, need to directly oversee the CBCI. I mean, the CBCI's lack of existence before now, you know, meant it fell to administration officials, but again, I don't see it as being truly a meaningful change, and I'm a little concerned about what decisions they're going to make without us having meaningful input into their bylaws. So, I don't think any of us really appreciated that it was made unilaterally by the administration, and we at the very least wish and hope we won't regret that the administration did not include the council in the development of the body and its bylaws. That's all for me.
Well, I just have to comment that the administration very explicitly and publicly welcomed input in the development of this body and the bylaws. We shared them directly with you, and you know I've had open meetings and talked about this several times and have been open to discuss any concerns like that. And so, I do think you've had plenty of opportunity to give input on the bylaws and the body. We may not agree on exactly what comes out, that's fine.
Well, then, just to respond to that, you say that was open, but was there a meeting scheduled specifically with the council to discuss this issue?
I had several meetings with groups of council members, and it's up to the council, if you want to set a meeting to talk about this, you're certainly welcome to, but all I can do is say, I'd love to talk to you, here's what we're thinking about, come talk to me, meet with me, tell me what you think of it.
I think you've heard what we think. Thank you.
I'm hearing it. Thank you, yeah.
Additional round one questions? If not, I'll take a stab. Okay. Mayor, thank you for talking us through some of this. What, just to put a finer point on this question, what is the exact mechanism if the board were to choose to go to a seven-member board, split four-three, or what if it were to go to a three-two division or split on appointments?
Thank you for asking that. If the board were to change, if the bylaws were to change the number of board members, the bylaws would have to be amended, which is generally done by a majority, but the bylaws say any changes affecting the number or appointment of directors must be approved by the mayor and the council, city council, in addition to the directors. So, there could be a proposal that would have to be approved by those three entities.
So, would the proposal necessarily need to come, be initiated by members of that board, or could it be initiated externally?
It could be initiated, I assume, by any of the three, and then all three have to agree to it. Mayor, council, board.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Volan.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask you right now, would you approve such a change since you would be one of the people who would have to approve it?
A change of?
Either four, four-to-three or three-to-two.
I wouldn't tonight, but I'm happy to keep talking about it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll take another run at this, unless I'm missing someone? Okay. How would you know when you're done talking about it and able to make a decision?
Well, that's a good question. How do you guys know when you're done talking about something? You have votes? I'm happy to continue to talk. If you want to have a group of you sit down and explore this further, I'd be delighted to do that.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And?
Of course.
How would we know when we've reached a point of being done just talking about it? Thank you for being willing to talk about it. We hear that. How would we know when, in your mind, we're done?
I suppose when we reach agreement is when we would know we're done.
Okay. Additional questions? Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. Would you say, so I know the Redevelopment Commission is going to potentially be transferring property and/or funds. Would you say that the CBCI would take up any responsibilities currently, that currently belong to the Redevelopment Commission? I know it's taking up executive functions of other kinds, but would you say some of the responsibilities of the Redevelopment Commission would be taken up by the CBCI?
I would, I'm just trying to, thank you for the question. I'm just trying to think about it a minute. I'm thinking about the example of the Mill and the Trades District Development, which generally the Redevelopment Commission was not active in that, that was generally handled inside the administration. The Redevelopment Commission, as the owner of the property, decided to appropriate, in a contract, some funds to a nonprofit to do some development related to its property. I could imagine, I mean, I'm just trying to think parallels, if the Redevelopment Commission wanted to do that, they could with other entities, including the CBCI, I suppose.
Thank you. Does, can the Redevelopment Commission choose to, are there levels at which it can acquire, sell, transfer property that do not require council approval?
So, I am a lawyer, but I'm not licensed to practice, so I want to be careful about that. I, we, yes, there are certainly levels that, under state statute, are invoked that require the county, the city council, as you know, like a $5 million purchase, and all of those, of course, are unaffected by any of this.
Okay. I guess I'm interested in this line of questioning as another, the Redevelopment Commission has three mayoral appointments and two council appointments, and it's a fairly powerful body. You know, there's appropriations that it can make that don't rise to the level of council approval, it's a pretty significant entity, and that sort of power balance of appointing authorities is more in line with what some of my colleagues are asking for and saying. So, I'm trying to understand, in particular, I know there's executive functions the CBCI may take up, but to the extent that, the closer that they're into the realm of the RDC's responsibility, the more, I think, mirroring that appointment and power structure is perhaps logical, so that's why I was asking and might still want to dig into that a little more in the future. One additional question, similarly, which is that, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Barley-Dansman is both on the RDC and on the CBCI board, is that right?
That's correct.
And I imagine that was done intentionally, that nexus or that relationship.
We thought, given the, particularly the connection in the Trades District and the Hopewell for the RDC, that having a voice and a representative in the CBCI would be helpful. Again, look, let me just say, this is starting out, we have a lot to figure out, happy to talk about choices going forward. From my perspective, as your mayor, I'm just saying that the execution of this effort to develop Hopewell, to develop the Trades District are, as I indicated in the memo, are really not sustainable inside the administration without pretty substantial increases in personnel and changes in that, and that I don't think are really consistent with the long-term city responsibility either directly. So, this is really an arm of the administration, from my perspective, to help execute some exceptional opportunities, some really exciting opportunities, where, you know, this is not all, there's no, this is not all planned out, and happy to discuss options like how much, how does it relate exactly to the RDC? I think it's a good question.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Volan.
Mr. Mayor, you're aware that the RDC is a five-member board, right?
Yes, sir, I am.
And you're aware that the appointments are three mayoral and two council?
Yep.
Why not just model it on that? Why didn't you model the CBCI?
I've explained my view. The RDC is in no way a kind of an operational execution body. It hasn't been. We looked at whether it would make sense to turn it into that. It's just so different from what they've done and their role that we didn't feel it was appropriate to do, so. And I respect you may have a different view on that, but.
We clearly do. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor Hamilton, thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you for your attention. Look forward to it. Have a good meeting.
Okay. With that, we go to a report on staff recommendations regarding scooters and micro-mobility options, and we have Mr. Crowley with us, I believe.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Alex Crowley. I'm the Director of Economic and Sustainable Development.
I spoke right at the same time you were beginning to. I believe we had a maximum of 20 minutes set aside for this section of the agenda. It's perhaps worth making a motion to extend that. Do we have a, well, I haven't.
Is there a second?
I haven't made a motion yet. I was going to perhaps request a point of information about how much more time we think is needed for mayoral presentation prior to making a motion.
Absent the Q and A, because that's hard to figure out, but I mean, it'd be nice to have a little bit more time on the presentation itself, 25, 30 minutes at the most, and then if there's another 10, 15 minutes of Q and A, I think that'd be great.
Okay. I would like to move that we extend the time for reports from the mayor and city offices to 8:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by, oh, that's debatable, right? Is there any debate or discussion?
No, no, I, direction, not debatable.
Got it. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the ayes have it, so. Mr. Crowley, please go ahead.
Thank you for that. So, again, good evening, councilmembers. I'm Alex Crowley. I'm the Director of Economic and Sustainable Development. I'll be joined this evening by Hank Duncan, Bicycle and Pedestrian Coordinator in the city's Planning and Transportation Department, who has done a remarkable job synthesizing input from various parties to produce the recommendations he will share with you. Kirk White will also briefly add the university's perspective at the end of our report. We look forward to answering any questions you may have at the end of our prepared remarks. Our report this evening will provide background on shared-use micro-mobility deployments in Bloomington, where things stand now, our recommendations for improving the safety of both riders and pedestrians, and for improving accessibility for pedestrians in the public right-of-way. We will end with our proposed next steps following this evening's report. Let me begin by reemphasizing that we are primarily concerned with two key issues, rider and pedestrian safety and parking and pedestrian accessibility in the public right-of-way. Shared-use micro-mobility has clearly become a contentious issue across the country and here in Bloomington, having had the the country and here in Bloomington, having had the unfortunate effect since initial deployments of separating our constituents into two distinct camps. On the one hand is a vocal and persistent group of residents and stakeholders who have clearly expressed their discontent with shared use micro-mobility. And we've all heard that discontent loud and clear, and recognize the issues they've raised regarding challenges we see in the community. On the other hand is a relatively more silent but significant user base, often younger and skewing to the university student population, who relies on shared use micro-mobility as a means of transportation. We also recognize their interest, as manifested in part in the significant ridership data we track. Our goal is to help the community navigate through these competing perspectives as we propose revisions to the scooter regulations this evening. And we recognize that with any proposed compromise, neither side will be entirely satisfied. What we're seeking from council today is final thoughts and questions regarding the recommendations, which we plan to bring to the Board of Public Works for the ratification in April. In our discussions with council leadership preceding this report, we agreed that there was no need this evening for legislation, but certainly are open to that action at any later date should the council and the city legal department deem it necessary. As you know, the ordinance broadly assigns the detailed of shared use micro-mobility licensing to the Board of Public Works in an effort to streamline updates. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge the significant and very positive collaboration and partnership we've had with Indiana University over the past several months in developing these recommendations. Indiana University shares city staff's and the council's interest in rider and pedestrian safety and accessibility concerns, and we very much appreciate their input to the process, especially given the significant proportion of the user base among the student population. Let me briefly summarize the history of shared use micro-mobility deployments in Bloomington and the adjustments council and city staff have made along the way to manage the deployments and improve the rules of operation. As you may recall, shared use micro-mobility launched in the spring of 2018, when the city and IU collaborated with Zagster, a bike-share company, to launch a fleet of bicycles in Bloomington. Boston-based Zagster had exclusive rights as a bike-share operator in the community, building upon 200 bike-share deployments across 35 states. They launched in Bloomington with 150 bikes. Almost immediately on the heels of that deployment, in the early fall of 2018, Bird and Lime, and ultimately Vio, launched fleets of stand-up scooters across the city, effectively creating competitive micro-mobility system to the more traditional bike-share deployments. User preference quickly migrated to the nearly ubiquitous scooter fleets, causing Zagster to terminate its deployment in 2019. Since the initial deployments by the three scooter operators, staff and council have taken several steps to regulate the use of the devices around the community. In November 2018, operators were placed under an interim operating agreement, which instituted initial parameters around their deployments in Bloomington. In July 2019, the interim agreements were supplanted by Ordinance 1909 and the corresponding license agreements through the Board of Public Works, which more specifically define the rules to which operators are subject. These rules have been in place since 2019, and operators renewed their licenses in 2020 and 2021 through the prescribed process. They are currently operating based on their previous license. City legal agreed with this approach pending revisions to the licensing process, particularly given that we all anticipated such revisions occurring reasonably quickly during the winter season, in which student, in which scooter deployment and use decreased dramatically. I should also note that the operators largely withdrew their fleets for several seasons during the pandemic, significantly altering the community's experience with the deployments, but they are now back in full deployment. And finally, as you know, most recently, Public Works deployed temporary personnel across the downtown in a pilot effort to evaluate parking issues, correct problems, and help document the issues affecting more congested areas. I know the council received an update on that pilot program earlier this month. So we currently find ourselves in a complicated situation. While hundreds of thousands of annual micro-mobility rides suggest that these devices are an integral part of the transportation landscape in Bloomington, especially among the younger demographic in our town, we need to recognize this comes with a heavy cost. Data, while incomplete, suggests that there continue to be injuries, both to riders and pedestrians, as a result of the use of micro-mobility devices across the community. Additionally, there have been two devastating fatalities in Bloomington involving scooters, both in the fall of 2022. One was the death of an 18-year-old IU freshman, who died on August 18th from injuries sustained while riding and crashing a scooter in the late-night hours. Another fatality, though not directly related to scooter use, occurred only a month later, on September 19th, I'm sorry, September 18th, when a 20-year-old IU junior died after being hit by a suspected drunk driver while he rode a scooter on a sidewalk. These two deaths are important to recognize, and we're deeply affected by them. As a father of similarly aged students myself, I cannot imagine the sadness and loss borne by the families and friends of these students as a result of these tragedies. In addition, ongoing parking challenges continue to plague the community, causing issues with accessibility in the public right-of-way, and more broadly, a general sense that scooters are negatively impacting the aesthetics of the community. While certainly not rising to the severity of the fatalities and injuries, they impact many residents, and in particular, those depending upon accessibility in the right-of-way. It's with this in mind that city staff, with the substantial input from Indiana University, councilmembers, and many of our constituents, propose the following changes to the shared use micro-mobility licenses, which Hank will detail for you now.
First, thank you so much for giving us the time to speak about this tonight and allow us to summarize what we've been working on these past few months.
Can you confirm your name?
My name is Hank Duncan, and I am the Bicycle and Pedestrian Coordinator in Planning and Transportation. Thank you. And also, thank you for giving us some extra time so we can dig a little bit deeper into these recommendations and not just give a surface-level overview. So as my colleague Alex mentioned, there are two main concerns that we're looking at with shared micro-mobility. One being rider and pedestrian safety, and then the other being parking, that clutter aspect of it, and improving pedestrian accessibility. Moving first into rider and pedestrian safety, we're going to detail each of these recommendations, talking about educational quizzes, adjusting hours of operation, adding a minimum number of sit-down vehicles versus stand-up vehicles, and then operator helmet certification. Digging into pre-ride educational quizzes, this is something that some operators already do in other cities. It seems like low-hanging fruit that we can deploy in Bloomington without much trouble at all. These quizzes would be completely run by the operator, setting them up, deciding which questions to ask the riders. That would be in collaboration with city staff and administration. But it would detail rules of the road, safe riding habits, appropriate riding, appropriate parking locations, things that all riders should know before they hop on these vehicles. Right now, we're thinking about making these riders answer these quizzes semi-annually, so two times per year, just keep, just give them a refresher of what the rules of the road are and how to ride these vehicles safely. Adjusting out the hours of operation, this was a main topic of conversation between all the stakeholders involved. And what you see here is that compromise, that happy medium ground that seems to appease all members involved. So, starting with stand-up scooters, and, and these hours of operation revolve around daylight. So, the concern right now is about the after-hours riding, nighttime riding. That's one reason why we have this current 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM curfew in place right now. So, what we came to is that from April through October, during the, during the time with more evening sunlight, keeping the curfew as is, 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM. But in those winter hours, when we have an earlier sunset, pushing back or pushing up that curfew to 8:00 PM. So, anybody, so all stand-up scooters from any operator in the city will shut down from 8:00 PM to 5:00 AM during those times. That said, when, when we're talking about the safety of our riders, we also need to talk about the equity of this mode of transportation, the accessibility of it, in that there are a lot of Bloomington residents who still need to get around town during those curfew hours. And so, when talking with the different stakeholders, there seemed to be a push in the direction of e-bikes and sit-down vehicles that these companies already offer, some in Bloomington, some in other cities. So, currently, Vio has their sit-down Cosmo, Cosmo e-scooter. If you sit around town, it looks kind of like a moped, but it's essentially a sit-down scooter. Lime has e-bikes around town, and Bird, right now, just has stand-up vehicles, but they have the ability to deploy e-bikes if necessary. So, this in terms of hours of operation was the compromise of safety plus equity for those riders and accessibility for those riders who need to get around Bloomington cheaply and accessibly after hours. With that, to make sure that there are enough sit-down vehicles, sit-down scooters and e-bikes available for those residents who need to use them after hours, we are requiring, or we are recommending, we are recommending a requirement of that 25% of each operator's fleet consists of sit-down vehicles. Just, just for reference, right now, Vio has about 310 vehicles deployed right now. About half of them, a little bit, a little less than half are sit-down vehicles. Lime has about 500 deployed right now, about 50 or so are sit-down vehicles, are their, are their e-bikes. And then Bird currently has no sit-down vehicles. So it'd be a tremendous push in the direction of cycling and sit-down scooters around town rather than the stand-up scooters that you see more often than not here. As an added incentive to push towards those sit-down vehicles, if an operator has a fleet that consists more than half of sit-down vehicles, that per-ride fee that they pay the city would decrease for the, for the fleet from 15 cents per ride to 10 cents per ride. So essentially, we are trying to push them, push them in the direction of sit-down vehicles. There seems to be, one, just a normalcy bias behind cycling. People are more familiar with them, riding with them, drivers and pedestrians dealing with them on the street. The larger wheels, you're able to roll over things more. The center of gravity, you're a little bit lower. So crashing is, is a little bit different than a stand-up scooter. There's some data behind this. There's not too much crash data behind this on really what the difference is, but in terms of perception, there is definitely both a rider, pedestrian, and driver perception that sit-down vehicles, those e-bike sit-down scooters, are safer than stand-up scooters. The operator helmet certification, so in the past, some operators have held events at Indiana University to give away helmets to students, and that, that rider base, and there's been a concern that those helmets are not to U.S. code. I can't speak much to that, but there's been, there's been, been a growing concern behind that. So, we are recommending, just putting in writing, that any helmet, any safety equipment given out by these operators needs to be authentically, authentically decode as defined by the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission. Moving on over to parking and pedestrian accessibility issues, I'll just skip ahead. So, speaking about designated parking corrals. When looking at what other cities around the U.S., around the world have, how have they mitigated and diminished this parking clutter problem that you see on the sidewalk, the main response is designated corrals for scooters. It allows the scooters to be in a confined place. We can still use existing bike racks in Bloomington, but adding these corrals just provides a space for these shared micro-vehicles that isn't currently there. The one caveat with that is, in terms of its effectiveness, the frequency of them in high-use areas is crucial. Studies show that these riders and cyclists are only really willing to walk about one to two minutes from their parking spot to their destination. So, putting them in these high-use areas, that would be mainly the core downtown area. So when installing them in the downtown or other high-use areas, the frequency of them is important, so they will actually be used effectively. In conjunction with these corrals, what cities have been moving towards is this geofencing technology. What that is essentially is, these operators have the ability to code certain parking areas. So if you are riding and you want to get somewhere, you cannot actually end your trip on the app unless you are within these certain areas. And those certain areas are appropriate parking locations, being parking corrals and bike racks. That picture you see on there is the city of Cleveland, Ohio. The, the before picture, I think, is in 2019, before they had parking corrals, before they implemented any geofencing technology. The after picture is after they implemented both corrals and geofencing technology. And you can, you can just see that in the before picture, the scooters are pretty widely dispersed, but in the after picture, you, you can just see the congestion of them in those certain areas that they are required to park in. The only, I would say, negative about geofencing technology is that, right now, it is not that accurate, that accurate, where you can get it within such a small space. So instead of geofencing an area of maybe five by 10 feet, which would be a normal size for a parking crowd, you would have to geofence it to maybe 20 or 30 feet around that area to allow those riders to end the ride once they get in that area. But combined the geofencing technology with the parking corrals, it has helped Cleveland and many other cities mitigate that parking accessibility problem that we're experiencing right now in Bloomington. The other approach of solving parking is providing incentives to riders to park appropriately. This is an approach that Vio especially lean towards and recommends. They are taking the, the approach of more of the giving a carrot to the riders for parking properly than hitting them with a stick for not. Essentially, what this is, is when a rider parks in appropriate location, that being a parking crowd or, or by a bike rack, the rider is awarded with a certain financial incentive, that being maybe a couple or a few free minutes toward their next ride with Vio. They, they find that it helps change the behavior more long-term. Honestly, I think it's too early for us to say which one works better. So at least for this next license cycle, the 23 to 24, 2023 to 2024 licensing cycle, I would like to see both of these strategies enacted of geofencing and incentivize parking, to see which one works better in Bloomington. Because scooters are still a very new mode of transportation. They've only been around for about five years or so. And each city, while dealing with the same problems, has come up with certain unique, unique solutions to these problems. And it'd be interesting to see which one, which of these strategies works better in Bloomington, and then reassessing after a year. Enforcing vehicle fleet caps. Last year, at their peak time, the operators, I believe Vio had about 450 vehicles deployed. Lime had about 600, and Bird was about 550 to 600 as well. So total, at its peak time, around 1,600 to 1,700 vehicles in Bloomington. We are recommending lowering that to We are recommending lowering that to 400 vehicles per operator. And also, I think I mentioned this earlier, but right now, VO has 310 vehicles deployed, Lime has 500, and Bird didn't get back to us before this meeting, but I think they also have around 500, so they're not at their peak level yet, but they are closing in on it as the weather gets warmer. So lowering this down to 400 will simply just reduce the unneeded vehicles around The one caveat with this cap is, we want to still keep enough vehicles available for the, for the rider base if ridership does explode and keep growing, especially in those high-use times like beginning of fall semester at IU, that's when we see by far the highest ridership amount. So if, on a weekly average, the number of trips per vehicle per day, so how, how many times is a single vehicle being used, if that surpasses two, they will be able to increase their fleet size with approval from the Board of Public Works. Right now, we're really only seeing that 2.0 being surpassed in that August to October timeline. When the fall semester comes back in full form, students are back, weather's warm, and then at the end of the spring semester, usually around now, about past, past spring break to the end, end of, beginning of May, end of the semester, that's when we see the ridership really peak up. But there are times during the year, during winter and during summer and early spring, when that ridership is just not there, so we won't necessarily need to worry about that. One important topic that we are addressing is finding operators for improperly parked vehicles. So I'll touch on this timeline a little bit more in a second, but what we're thinking for, as a timeline, is having these corrals, having this geofencing technology, all of these recommendations implemented by July 31st. So August 1st, if there are vehicles not in their appropriate places, that being parking crowds, bike racks, it might be missing a few places, but those are the main places, if there are vehicles not in their appropriate parking spots, then a designated city employer contractor, I think you all heard from Public Works a couple weeks ago on this, if, if their employees are going around and they find vehicles that are not in those appropriate spots, we will, we may and we will assess fines to the operators for that. And lastly, creating special protocols for major events, and by major events, we're, we're mainly talking about IU football and basketball games, when there, there's such a high, highly dense crowd going to one location. Some of the operators, mainly Lime does this in, in other college towns especially, is they have special event protocols, where while IU may decide to geofence the entire athletic complex area so riders cannot go into it, there will still be riders going to that area to travel for sporting events and, and other concerts, events like that. So they have these protocols in place, so we have designated parking areas there for large amounts of shared microvehicles, and then they will also have a staffer on-site to help with any problems. If somebody drops a scooter outside of its place, if there are any other problems, they will be there to solve them. And just looking long-term, all of these recommendations that we've been talking about are feasible for the short term, but long-term, especially if we are intent on following the community's comprehensive plan and, and what that is, especially with sustainable transportation, this list of recommendations really pushes us in that direction. Scooter riders, cyclists, pedestrians, all fall under that umbrella of vulnerable street users, and while there may be some conflict between scooter riders on the sidewalk versus pedestrians, as a whole, they, they're all part of that sustainable modes of transportation group, and things like leading pedestrian intervals, protected intersections, do a ride on red intersections, these are all things that, long-term, will help not just scooter riders' safety, but pedestrian safety, cyclist's safety. And honestly, when talking with other cities on how they are dealing with these problems, these are the things that they are first talking about in protecting not just scooter riders, but pedestrians, cyclists, everybody who walks and rolls around town as well. Also, the, the addition of physical scooter and bike racks in these corrals eventually would be recommended, so right now, these corrals would just be an area of paint and a decal, no real infrastructure needed. But eventually, one thing that I think we all see around town is that scooters fall very easily. And so the addition of scooter racks, or just additional bike racks to allow places for those scooters to lean and not just fall over on the street or the sidewalk, that would be wonderful, just to improve the aesthetic nature of Bloomington. And finally, universal charging stations, this is something that's starting to pop up around the U.S. And just looking at the trend of electric microvehicles, especially e-bikes, and that ridership trend exploding over the past decade, the fact that it is the fastest-growing mode of transportation in the U.S., these universal charging stations are just another way to prioritize these, these modes of travel, because right, right now at least, they continue to grow, and it doesn't seem like they will, they're stopping growing anytime soon. Taking a look at the next steps, what's next to come, I'll be giving this presentation to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission meeting on Monday, April 10th, and they will be voting on whether to recommend that, to recommend these recommendations to the Board of Public Works meeting that following day on April 11th. The Board of Public Works will hear that, vote on that, and vote whether to approve these recommendations in some way or another. Hopefully, then, in mid-April, we'll be working on implementing these recommendations, the how, when, and what we're doing with these. Again, as I mentioned before, July 31st, we are looking to be complete, completely finished with the implementation period, and August 1st, we will be renewing these scooter licenses and implementing the, the recommendations as mentioned, and going forward with that. So I will pass it off to Mr. Kirk White, who is here from Indiana University, to say a few words as well.
Well, good evening. For the record, I'm Kirk White, I serve as Vice Provost for External Relations at Indiana University. It's good to be here this evening, back in this room, and I'm joined this evening by my colleague Paul Schmidt, who's Chief of Staff at our Office of the Vice President for Finance Administration, which is the arm that is, that our public safety folks report to. So tonight, what I'd like to do is talk a bit about these, this, this process we've been through, and thank Alex, Hank, and many other members of the city administration who have, city staff who've worked with us over the past few months to come up with the recommendations that Alex and Hank provided a few minutes ago. We really appreciate this cooperative effort, because as Alex so well described, last fall was very difficult for us on the campus. To lose two students in the first month of classes is devastating for us. We never expect that sort of thing to happen in these, in these accidental situations that we look at and say, as, as administrators charged with, with protecting our students and providing a good environment, what can we do to avoid this? And that's exactly what we started talking with the city about, and found out that the city, as Alex outlined, top priority for the city administration, as well as for Indiana University, our strongest priority is for the safety of our students, faculty, and staff. And then second is, a stated goal of the university is the promotion of these multimodal alternatives, and we've done several things at the campus to help with that, you're well aware of a lot of that from our support and partnership with Bloomington Transit, providing electric charging stations at our parking garages, incentives for carpooling, and this type of thing. We want to make these multimodal things available as the, as a good campus and community partner. We believe that the restricting, as we look at these recommendations, we believe that the restricting of hours during low visibility is exactly where we need to be. From our perspective, restricting the use of scooters dusk to dawn would be even better. But this improvement that, that has been recommended, well, some implemented, the 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM, and then the new recommendations from November to March, from 8:00 PM to 5:00 AM during times of less visibility, darker periods of time, according to the sun, that would be better too, because we see that, as has been outlined, these accidents that occur particularly at intersections are a lot of times because of reduced visibility. So the incentives as well for sit-down e-bikes is another really good thing, to provide those kind of incentives for the, for the companies to, to provide a safer alternative. We think that if you look at the physics of the whole thing, falling forward on a scooter is a lot, a lot easier to do than falling forward and injuring yourself on a sit-down bike, it's just the center of gravity. So that would, those incentives are a really good direction ahead as well. We're also supporting the, the ability to do these geographic restrictions, geofencing is noted, particularly in our athletic complex during high-impact events particularly, but really all the time, because of the, the bus circulation that we have and the parking circulation that we have during normal business hours in the athletic complex. But then during athletic events, we have lots of different traffic direction going on, and geofencing the restrictions in that area is a good direction ahead as well. We would, if we could, restrict the speed on campus to 10 miles per hour. We realized that would be difficult to separate that from campus to city, but that may be a good direction to head. In the contracts now, there's a 15 mile an hour maximum speed, but that's on level ground, and as you've noticed, I sure have, I've seen scooters moving a lot faster than that going downhill. And if you happen to hit a, hit something or need to stop quickly, it's difficult. So reducing speeds would be a good thing. And then finally, the discussion about education efforts, we think is one of the most important pieces in all this. What, what happens in August is, we have this new influx of students, they see an electric scooter and think, wow, this is, this is something I want to try. But it's a whole lot different than that one that they may have had when they were six or seven years old. It's got a motor, it runs, it, it, it can do a lot more than what you had to do when you're powering this with your left foot. And so they, they jump on, take off, and without the right kinds of education, realizing what they're getting themselves into, before they know it, they're in a situation that they can't control and end up in an accident. So education, making the incentives for that, partnering with the companies, partnering with the city, we've done some of that in the past, making sure that these helmets that the companies provide are, are up to the codes, those are all things we want to partner with and do, and make sure that happens in August and September as well. That's all I have from the university's perspective, but I'm happy to answer any questions, and I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Madam President.
May I, we're coming close to 8 o'clock, may I move to extend time allowed for reports from the mayor and city offices until 8:30?
Is there a second to allow time for questions and discussion?
Second.
I, I call for a roll call vote.
Absolutely. Madam Clerk? So could you restate the motion?
Yes, to extend the time allowed for reports from the mayor and city offices until 8:30.
And it was moved and seconded.
Councilmember Clarity?
No.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Simms?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Volan?
No.
That was 6:3, did I catch that correctly? 6:3, time for these reports is extended until 8:30. Let's go to council questions. For Mr. Duncan, Mr. Crowley, or Mr. White? Mr. Councilmember Smith, then Rallo, then Volan.
This can be for Mr. Duncan or Mr. Crowley, I just, I wanted to ask, how much does it cost to, to administer this program for the city?
Thanks for the question. You're asking about the administration of the, of these recommendations as presented?
Well, if we're going to do enforcement, et cetera, including, some of them I, I know are longer-term charging stations, et cetera, but, I mean, how much, what's the ballpark of what it's going to cost the city to administer this?
So there are going to be hard costs and soft costs, right? The hard costs are going to involve, as you heard on March 8th, the, the cost of deploying people out to that, those congested areas, and there's a range, obviously, depending on how you do it, with the, maybe the high end, I think was discussed, about $150,000 if you went to a third party, something less than that if you bring it in-house. There's soft costs, so for example, we were recommending, we are recommending the ability to fine, fine student, scooter companies if there is a violation as, as chronicled by one of those assets. There is a staff cost to doing that unless we outsource that, right? So either we absorb that, try to make it as efficient as possible, just absorb it in staff time, or we try to outsource that, in which case there's a hard cost.
So, so do you, would you estimate it's maybe $200,000, $250,000 per year?
Yeah, I don't think that's unreasonable, I think it's maybe probably the high end, but, you know, and ideally, we can find a way to lower those costs, but that's not unreasonable.
So the next question that I need to ask is, the revenue that we get from the scooter companies per annum will be how much?
Adequate to cover that. You know, there are a couple of different revenue streams right now, you've got a fixed fee, you've got a per-use fee, there will be fining revenue, which is sort of an unfortunate benefit of the program, so there'll be revenues coming in, it's a little hard to quantify that, but if you look at the violations as they were chronicled in the first part of the pilot, you know, then, then there'll be some, not small amount of revenue associated with that. So we will be setting, you know, we'll have to model it out, but we will set the costs associated with, with some of those other activities according to the needs as we see it, and then we'll have to validate the model.
Right, yeah, my, my concern is just, we're, we're not subsidizing the companies, the city of Bloomington.
No, absolutely not. We're also not in this for profit, I mean, it should be clear.
Sure, I understand that, I, I just, you know, they're making the money, and what we're doing is providing the environment for them to do that, and so I just didn't think that our taxpayers should pay for any of that.
And there will be, the costs of, you know, painting corrals, for example, right? There are going to be some tactical costs like that as well.
Right, thank you, Ms. Crowley.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, well, Mr. Crowley, let's, let's begin by saying, count me skeptical, because originally, since 2019, we were told that enforcement, that infractions would be remedied by fines or impoundment, and that wasn't the case, despite the fact that these scooters were blocking sidewalks for, for that time duration, for a very long time. So there's the enforcement question that I'm highly skeptical of, if this is going to be changing. But let's just focus on sustainability. You mentioned it's an integral part of our transportation system, and I wondered, do we have an idea of the average ride? What's, what's the, what's, what's the duration of the ride? Is it, is it a half a mile, a mile? Is it, because what I'm trying to get to is, you know, I see it as a planting walking, or maybe riding public transportation, which it apparently has, we maybe have some data for that. Could, could you just ask? Could you just ask, answer, what, what's the average ride, do we know?
I, you may know that data, yeah.
So in miles, I don't know, but the average ride in minutes is around seven minutes or so, and just in terms of sustainability as a whole, there was a study done in Santa Monica, which I get is not Bloomington, but there was a study done there on what is the actual sustainable benefit of scooters versus driving your car? And when you look at the substitutes that people would use where scooters would not be available, about 40% would be driving, whether that's driving their, their own car or using a ride-hailing service, service like Uber or Lyft. There's another large proportion who would bike or walk or tuck, or take public transit. But on average, each ride saves about 350 grams of carbon emissions, and it will, it does reduce vehicle miles traveled, but, but again, that's a great question of how sustainable is it? But on average, it is much more sustainable than driving a car.
Well, yes and no. I mean, it depends on the location, I suppose. In Santa Monica, that might be the case. I'm not sure that's the case in Bloomington, because as I said, I think it supplants walking. But I, what am I understanding is, is that the disposable nature of these things is pretty alarming. In other words, they have an average lifespan of one to five months, I understand. So they don't last very long, because they're subject to the elements, rain, water, et cetera, freezing, and so, so forth. It, it destroys the, the mechanism. So it's not cared for, it's meant to be disposable, by then the company makes a profit. Do we know where the lithium battery goes?
That, I'm not sure, but I, I can reach out to the operators and get back to you.
So this is something that's concerning. I don't think they're sustainable, but thank you for addressing my question.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan?
I'm a little, one, one, I mean, I'm agnostic on the presentation as a whole, but one slide that struck me was the change in time from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM in March. Now, daylight savings time springs forward in the middle of March, so there's at least two, three weeks, we're in that period right now, where, I'm trying to think, so we spring forward, so that means it would be suddenly much lighter, but it would still be dark significantly, I mean, it would be Mr. White's concern about dusk to dawn, you know, like I think at 10:00 PM in March, 10:00 PM in April, it's still very dark out. So how were those times chosen? The same is going to be true in October. How were the, how was that time chosen, and is there, can we be a little bit more fine-tuned with that?
Yeah, we can totally. I mean, I think they were somewhat, I wouldn't focus so much on the hour, we could figure that out according to the daylight, and, you know, what I, we were trying to do is really point out, as Mr. White said, you know, in a perfect world, they would stop working when the sun goes down. Well, that's a moving target, and it's, it's impossible to operationalize that into a, into a technology. So, so it's really just to pick fixed times, try to simplify it for the user, so you're not trying to guess every month what the new hour is, and just make it simple.
Okay. Well, at the very least, if it would change with daylight savings time, that might be a little bit more, you know, accurate a, a time. Thanks.
Throughout this report, we're hearing a lot about the safety issues, which are concerning, mostly the riders, I suspect, are IU students. We all want to keep them safe, but I'm not hearing as much about the pedestrian issues, and these are the things that we as council people hear the most from our constituent meetings about the clutter, the sidewalks that are now not accessible to people when, in, who have mobility issues, who have sight issues. So has the council on community accessibility been involved in any way, shape, or form in these studies? Because there are several folks that we need to be concerned about their safety and their well-being, and that's people using our sidewalks that are finding these scooters to be extremely detrimental. I've gotten reports recently of, of people walking and tripping over them who have sight issues and breaking bones. So what can we say about the business of being tougher with impoundment? And just getting them off the street? If you're parked in an inappropriate way and you're blocking an ADA ramp, you're blocking a sidewalk, where is the will to just say, this is a violation, and we're taking it, and we're impounding it somewhere, and if the scooter companies want them back, they're going to have to pay for them? I mean, I, I'm just wanting to know, can we get tougher while still protecting those who still want to ride them and need to ride them? Throughout the presentation too, I'm hearing that the VOs, that are the e-bikes and the ones you can sit on, are more safe, so why not be tougher with that? And say the stand-up ones, let's just ban them altogether and keep the ones that are safer for everybody in play. But speak specifically to the pedestrians that we're hearing from that are very upset about this and are wondering why we're not acting.
We, we hopefully made it clear that there are, in fact, a lot of what we talked about and is designed for the pedestrian, right? It's designed to clear the sidewalks, the corrals are designed to clear the sidewalks, violation and fines are designed to clear the sidewalks. So I would suggest that there is a lot in the recommendations that are specifically speaking to what you're saying. So that was obviously an important part of our consideration set as we came together on our recommendations and, and really tried to balance all of the interests, right? So in, in my view, and in our view, as a, as a kind of set of recommendations, the marginal benefit of impounding versus fining is small. If you fine, again, especially in those congested areas where you have the greatest amount of contention, you are able to get a majority of the benefit of the stick on the, ultimately the scooter company via their rider. The cost of impounding, which seems like it's not, it's not a lack of willingness, there's an operational cost to all of that, shipping, you know, you have people out there, they are no longer just fixing a problem, they are now responsible for taking that problem away, storing that problem. You have the administration's administrative side of, and costs associated with, with, you know, tracking the devices, ref, you know, getting fine money back, all that stuff. I mean, there's a lot of operational side. So what we tried to do is say, we are not at all hesitant in, in penalizing offending scooter companies and riders, but the way to do it, we feel, is to do it in the most cost-effective way from the city's perspective, which is the fine. So we, we intend to fine, we intend to fine on the basis of our own personnel, making the assessment that there's a finable offense, and we need to kind of run that out to see what that looks like, to make sure that we understand what effect that has ultimately on the change of behavior, which is really the objective.
Okay, but again, to the council on community accessibility, was anyone representing that group a part of these discussions, these, the, the plan we have before us today?
Not particularly on that, on that council. We've obviously taken accessibility significantly in mind as we were developing these, but I'm not sure that that particular council was, and it certainly could be.
I, I would suggest that it should be.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Pete Month Smith?
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Crowley, Mr. Duncan, and Mr. White for working together collaboratively on this proposal. But I must say, after almost three years after we passed laws governing the use, and particularly the parking of these vehicles, to now hear you say you're going to start fining, where we all know that there have been massive violations throughout the community is, does not generate much confidence in me, and I don't want to blame anybody. In particular, I think perhaps in the, the city, there has been perhaps, I can only assume that there has been a lack of willingness on behalf of the mayor to actually enforce the laws that this council has passed, and that is unacceptable to me. So I appreciate your recommendations, but let us just review some of the things in the ordinance that we passed that have been ignored by the executive branch as far as enforcement. There's supposed to be a penalty of $20, a fine of $20 for users, a possible fine of up to $2,500 for the scooter companies, and of course, lack of renewal of their licenses as a consequence of violating this chapter. And the, the companies were supposed to have public outreach events, were supposed to give away helmets at any ti, you know, that would be available at any time, not just special events. And of course, the parking was supposed to be somewhere where the scooter cannot fall over, it's not supposed to block sidewalks, there's supposed to be 54 inches available on the sidewalks to pass. It says, under no circumstance shall motorized scooters be parked so as to impede accessibility under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Well, we know just by walking around downtown and by the advocacy of people like Chuck Livingston that this is violated constantly. So I guess my question is, prior to this point, have there been any fines either for users or the, any repercussions for the scooter companies?
Well, you've said a lot, so let me try to break it down. For starters, let me remind you that the ordinance went in place in 2019, and as I mentioned in my opening remarks, there were two years, effectively, year and a half effectively, of a pandemic, right? No students, very few, if any, scooters out there, so there was kind of, you know, we, we should also remember that, that in fact, there's kind of a compression of our experience both with and without the scooters that we just have to recognize in the interval that you're describing. The short answer is there's, there have not been fines. That is not a, you know, lack of awareness of what the options are. That's why we're coming to you today with the ability and desire to fine. There have not been impounding behaviors either, and that's always on the table, but we're not recommending that right now. And then the education side of, of rider safety has occurred. That's part of the exercise of submitting a license. They are certifying that they've done that, fulfill their license obligation, that has occurred in the cases of the renewals. So that's where we are, and, you know, I think it's, it's, it's a good time for us to be imposing this kind of set of recommendations, because we'll now be able to see with the effect of it moving forward. We'll need some time to implement it, but we'll see the effect of it moving forward.
Does that conclude your question?
Yes, that concludes my question. Thank you.
Councilmember Sims and Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thank you. You just said not to fine is not a lack of awareness. Since the time we've been doing all this, and we brought this up about the lack of fines before, and why we weren't, and we put enforcement people, we did some stuff already. So if it's not a lack of awareness, my direct question is, what is it? Why are we not fining? I mean, why are we just now, what is it? If it's not a lack of awareness, is it a lack of will?
Well, why? Historically, have we not done it?
Since 2018, you pick a time. We've been talking about, we didn't start talking about this a month ago. We've been talking about this even during the pandemic.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I think the, the short answer is this, which is, we have always been aware of the fact that the ordinance allows for it, you know, to some degree, that the Board of Public Works allows for mechanisms to fine, and that the opportunity was there to do it. What we were hoping to do and, and hoping to see was what we saw following the initial launch of the scooter operators to begin with, which is, it was a bit of a free-for-all, the market stabilized, and then there was a much more kind of controlled, you know, deployment. What we were hoping to see was that the combination of rider education, you know, operators talking to their own riders, that would have a positive effect on the behavior of individuals' riding. I should note that the violations are not the scooter companies themselves placing scooters inappropriately, with very few exceptions. They are the riders of those companies who have not clearly internalized the direction that they're getting to be able to place the scooters in the right place at the end of the ride. So fundamentally, what we're trying to do is penalize the operator to be able to, you know, get them to do a better job of educating their riders, and we have to see if that's going to work. But the idea leading up to this point was that we were trusting and hoping that the, the operators themselves would do a better job to educate their riders, which clearly they haven't succeeded in doing.
Right. Three, four years later, they have not. I would agree. Three or four years later, they have not.
That's right.
I will agree with that. Has there been pushback on, on the university or what Mr. White talked about, dusk to dawn?
Of, I'm sorry.
Dusk to, can you not hear me?
Oh, has there been pushback on dusk to dawn?
Or, or what's the discussion there? I mean, we've gone to 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Why not just say dusk to dawn?
Well, as I was explaining.
Why can't we agree on that?
Yeah, as I was explaining, there, there's a kind of operational problem, tracking what dusk means, because literally what will happen is that scooter, you will not be able to ride the scooter following the cutoff point. And so what you have to do is kind of make sure that technologically you can execute on that, the operator, the scooter operators. And so rather than having ever-changing time that may or may not even be registered in the device, like the device doesn't know if the sun is shining or not, what we would recommend is you just pick a couple of times, you call that dusk, it's imperfect on both sides, but it's roughly when visibility starts to drop, and you impose those for the periods that, that allow for riders to be safer when they ride.
Okay. It just seems like it should be more simple than that. Hell, I'll pull out my phone right now and tell you when it's, when the sun is going to set, when it's going to rise, you know, tell you if it's going to rain, when I want to go play golf. How can, how difficult can it be for the operators? And, and it's not going to be dark like light, dark. There's this little process, you see, before, before it gets dark. You see what I'm saying? I mean, it starts to, you know what I'm saying?
Look, I'm, I'm not arguing, we are, yeah, and we're not tugging on our sword to say it must absolutely be 8:00, 8:00 PM. What we are saying is we absolutely agree with the university, that number one, safety is a top priority, that number two, simulating, if not actually delivering, a dusk-to-dawn blackout period is the objective. How we do that will come down to the capabilities, to some extent, of the scooter operators, but we are all saying, I think we're all aligning on the same basic principle here.
Okay. My whole thing is safety and, and, and blocking accessibility, and we've been talking about that. I don't know if you get the emails that we all get. I hope you do.
I do.
We get tons of them. And I also want to say, I understand the highest uses downtown, toward campus. I didn't hear you mention college mall area. Is that a high-ride usage or high-usage area?
Yes, I think there are, yeah, we, we.
Because that's where I see a lot of violations out there, where it's blocking the corners and where you push to get across the streets and these sorts of things. So go ahead, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, I think there are a variety of different high-use areas, and we, you know, we have some of that data, so we know where they, they are. It does become, I think if you're referring to deploying personnel to correct and, and discover violations, there's a diminishing return at, at a certain point in terms of the density of the usage, and so you just have to know kind of where that is and where the line is, and, and then figure out if you want to send people, even though it's inefficient to do that, or not. And I think we just have to learn a little bit more about that. The pilot was implemented in the downtown primarily, I think it was 10th and 3rd, Morton and Indiana, if I'm not mistaken, so certainly concentrated in the kind of broadly defined downtown, but it doesn't have to be limited to that.
Right. The education part too, when they were first deployed, I think down by the library, Lime had these set up, and people were riding it and testing it, or putting helmets on them and teaching them stuff and these sorts of things. When we're talking about education, is that what we're talking about now? Or this little card that I saw up there, and put on your helmet? How many people you see with a helmet? We can put it on that card all day long, and then it's like, enforced, it's like we can recommend. I mean, that, that's part of the terminology that I'm hearing, and none of that is concrete, I guess is what I'm saying. So we're going to have to do a year test to prove that not wearing a helmet will cause you trips, unnecessarily trips, to the emergency department. I mean, I don't know whose job it is to say, you will wear a helmet. I don't know. And I'm, I don't know.
I mean, I, look, I mean, I hate to say this, because I think there are a lot of very, very responsible members of the younger generation. I do think that there is, there comes a point where, I'm sure my children have not always made the right decisions. And so I, I guess what I would, what I would say is, certainly a couple of tenting events does not equate an adequate amount of education of your, of your ridership, which is why some of the quizzes. quizzes, some of the other things that IU is doing in terms of educating the ridership, and something that, you know, what we need the operators to do to up their game, that does constitute at least a better effort. Now, will it mean that every rider will be riding with a helmet? I would not bet on that. But I do think that we can make inroads. And I think if we, you know, if we see that not changing, we should always be evaluating that. I do think that, and I don't remember who it was that was talking, oh, I think it was Kurt, was talking about the Razor scooters, right, and that we, that our kids had when they were growing up, they had helmets because the parents were kind of forcing them to do that, right? What I, what I think is going to happen, and we'll have, we'll have to see if this happens, is that over time, people will start to see these devices less as novelties and more as kind of critical transportation devices for themselves. And like with bikes, that people would start to take, you know, helmet precautions much more seriously. We'll see if that happens. But in the meantime, what we can do is we can try to do everything we can to push the operators and also ourselves to educate the ridership, to try to make sure that they change their behavior.
Okay, thank you. And I have one more thing to say, but I want to thank everyone for their presentations. Yeah, this is it. Thank you. I think we got to 8:30, even though I voted no. I understand. Okay, I'm done. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Rosenberg.
Thank you, and thank you all for the presentations tonight. It really feels like a lot of research and data went into that. Just sticking to the helmets topic, are there, do any other cities offer any incentives for helmet ridership? I mean, I don't know how that could work exactly, but, you know, is there any way that you could prove that you're wearing a helmet and, or have it with you? Because I almost think like part of the barrier is just like hauling a helmet around with you sometimes.
So that's not something we've spoken with the operators directly, but I do remember reading, I forget if it was an operator in the U.S. or maybe Europe, but they do have a system where riders can kind of take a selfie with them in their helmet on before they ride it, and the camera recognizes if they have a helmet on or not. I think that's definitely a possibility that we can talk to the operators about, in that it seems like other operators are doing it, if not Lime, Burton, VO. So moving forward, that is certainly something that we can talk to them about and see if it's relatively easy to implement, because it might be worth it. I think it will be worth it.
Okay, that sounds pretty neat. Then I wanted to talk just a little bit about, okay, the e-bike option.
Yeah.
And I know we don't have that many right now, right?
Yeah.
So we used to have regular, I guess, like manual bikes as a bike share, and that didn't go very well in Bloomington, so they went away. Do you think, I guess my concern would be from like changing from stand-up scooters to e-bikes, that, do you think we would still see that kind of ridership that we see on a stand-up scooter, or is there data around that?
That is a great question, and that's really why we stuck with that 25% amount for 2023, where some stakeholders were wanting more, something like 50/50, sit-down vehicles and stand-up scooters. The operators were saying, or kind of on the other side, saying, "Look, the market's there for stand-up scooters. Why are we changing this? Why are we forcing riders to change?" Which I think that is a valid point. So that's why, at least for 2023, we're sticking with that number, and then we'll reassess. Maybe the ridership is still there, maybe it is dropping, because looking at past dockless shared micro-mobility systems, until the scooters came in about 2018, it was, bike share programs were growing, but not nearly at the growth rate that these scooter programs are. So it seems like there was and is a market to fill with scooters specifically. But again, it's not the city's job necessarily to fill a market and see where revenue is, it's to protect the interests of our residents and the safety of them. So again, that is, those are questions that we'll be asking throughout this next year and recessing in 2024.
Thank you. And then with the sit-down scooters, like the VOs, do those cost more to operate than the stand-up?
No.
Okay, so everything is the same from every company?
I believe so.
No matter what you're riding?
Yeah.
Okay. Question about the geofencing. What, how does it work when you ride a scooter or a sit-down scooter home?
So that is, so you're saying maybe going outside of the highly, the high-use areas and going maybe toward the outskirts of city limits where there may not be a bike crack or a corral for you, correct?
Yes, yes.
That is something where the incentivized parking may come in handy, because you don't necessarily need a geofenced area to park appropriately. That's something that I'm not too familiar with, honestly, and that is a main question I have of when we start to implement these recommendations and geofencing technologies, how do we deal with those less-used areas where there might not be a bike crack in your neighborhood, or might not be a specific corral in your neighborhood? Because we still want to allow residents to use this mode of transportation without the fear of having to walk an extra 10 or 15 minutes just to find an appropriate place to park.
Right, that makes sense. Or leave a scooter and then have to walk in, I don't know, an unsafe area.
Absolutely.
Okay, and then a question about that data you were saying at the, at the end there about sort of the environmental impacts of scooter ridership, and I think, were you saying 40%? Were you saying this was a Santa Monica?
So that was the number that Santa Monica used. There was also a survey done in 2019 in Bloomington that had to do with e-scooter usage and substitutes with that. And I forget the exact number, but it was around that 40 to 45% number. If scooters were not available, they would have driven or taken a ride hailing service like Lyft or Uber.
Oh, great. Okay, so you're saying our own city did a study, and 40 to 45% of the users said they would drive instead of scoot?
Yeah, and that's pretty consistent with other cities that have done similar surveys.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Claire.
Thank you. First, just great job on the presentation, all. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I've been a proponent of geofencing for some time, and I'm hopeful that that is one of the systemic changes we need to address some of the challenges. I also appreciate the focus on systemic issues around safety with regard to all users and all modes, and understanding that this is part of a broader picture of, you know, needing protective intersections, leading pedestrian intervals, et cetera. I wanted to follow up on the sustainability point as well. Recent independent assessments have shown life cycles at about five years, which leads to carbon emissions below basically every other mode, including transit. And that's, those were conducted with Bird scooters in Europe by independent bodies. And I wondered if we had specific data from the companies themselves, independent assessments of like their latest generation. I think the point my colleague was making earlier is that in the very first days of scooters, there were some learning curves with respect to how to make them durable, to shared use, and how to make them refurbishable. So I think that's shifted a lot over time, and some of the independently produced data bears that out. But do we have any more specific information from the organizations, the companies themselves, with respect to the lifecycle of their current generation of scooters?
Specifically, no. And I think Councilmember Rollup made a great point earlier about the lifecycle of scooters and the sustainability with that. So far, Lime and Burton are more familiar with those two operators. I think they're already on their third or fourth generation of scooters already, which has increased lifecycle. That is a question I can ask them and get back to you with, because that's a question I think we all have in terms of defining the true sustainability of these modes.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. We are coming up on 8:30, and I'll finish, or I'll defer to Mr. Crowley.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to add one other thing to the, to the idea, which is, you know, one of the major pivots that they've done is to, rather than, if you remember early on, they pulled all of the scooters at night, drove God knows how far, charged them, drove a Mack, right? None of that was, and so they're all kind of pivoting over to more of a swap-out battery, a much more tactical approach. So there's another side of the sustainability picture, other than just the durability of the actual device that is an evolution over time, and I'm sure it'll get better.
Thank you.
We are at 8:30. Do you have a motion to extend?
No, I just wanted to say very briefly that I'm seeing a pattern tonight between the comments of the mayor and now here, where the administration seems to be selectively enforcing laws passed by the council, and I am greatly, greatly concerned about it. The things that I heard from Councilmember Sims and Councilwoman Piedmont Smith discourage me from trusting the administration in future matters, and I just wanted to get that out before our deadline. Thank you.
May I respond to that?
Go ahead.
Very briefly, I think, with all due respect, Councilmember Volan, if you read the ordinance, the ordinance reserves the right to fine, reserves the right to do some of these other things, does not mandate it. And so to characterize it as allowing, sort of not fulfilling on the obligations of the ordinance, I would argue is an incorrect way to characterize it. It allowed for it. We are now pursuing that. That's a very different thing that we've said.
If I'm the only person on this day as who believes what I just said is the case, then I will withdraw my comment. Thank you.
We are up against the 8:30 time. We agreed to stop, and I am not seeing an additional motion to extend time. Okay. I, I didn't get a turn. So, no, that's okay. So may we send you additional questions in writing? What are next steps? Could you summarize that very briefly?
Yes, so please do. We've gotten a lot of feedback already from council members. We'd like to get more. We'd like to get more on the memo that you received last week, and, you know, certainly, please send those through. It would be our intention to proceed with the Board of Public Works to get their feedback and review of the recommendations on the 11th. 11th? 11th. And so the sooner the better, but certainly along the way. And, you know, as Hank said, and as I may have said also, keep in mind, this is, this is a very fluid and manageable process. So, you know, if there are things that we learn during the course of the implementation of some of these recommendations, we want to implement more changes, we do. That's why it was set up the way it was through Board of Public Works. We came to you today really to highlight the recommendations that we have and hope to get your additional feedback on them before we go forward.
Mr. Crowley, Mr. Duncan, Mr. White, thank you for being with us this evening. But I know there are several members of the public here who have comments on CBCI and scooters. That's coming up, so we're not leaving scooters necessarily. Are there any reports from council committees? Seeing none, we'll come into our first of two periods of public comment. Can I see a show of hands in chambers of how many would like to offer comment? One, two, three, Mr. Four. Mr. Lucas, could you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are members of the public on Zoom that would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature to let us know. You can find that in your control bar by clicking the reactions button or the more button. If you can't locate that raise hand feature, please send us a chat, and we can recognize you that way. I do see one hand raised on Zoom at the moment.
And, I'm sorry, say that again? Did you say there were hands raised on Zoom?
I see one hand raised on Zoom at the moment.
Okay. For those of you in chambers who would like to offer comment, please go ahead and approach the podium and sign in. Let's go with our individual on Zoom first. All folks are getting signed in.
Yes, first on Zoom, I believe we have Sonia Muzel.
Muzel?
I believe so.
Okay.
And should be able to unmute now, and I understand there are some slides that I've been asked to display.
Yes, Ms. Muzel, welcome. If you could confirm your name for the record, please, and then you'll have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Sonia Merle.
Merle, thank you.
Before the timer starts, I would like to make a quick request. I am planning on presenting my research slide, so I'd like to remind the council that the reason any kind of safety reformer on e-scooters is even happening right now is because of my work and the email I sent out months ago. And so with that in mind, I'd also like to bring up that my work was just quoted, actually, in the guideline presentation, but right after it was misinformation, which is not okay and needs to be cleared up. And so I would like more than five minutes to go through my slides and clear that up, if that's okay.
That's noted during public comment. We'll limit it to five minutes, but I'll allow the comments you've already made, and let's start the timer now. Please go ahead.
All right, I will go through the quickest highlights of what I have. All right, so this study on this slide, I analyzed data from 180 clinics in two hospitals in L.A. Of the 1,354 e-scooter injuries, identified two patients died. The study found an estimate of 115 injuries per million e-scooter trips, and it was noted to likely be an underestimate. This is higher than walking, riding in a car, a bicycle, and motorcycles. At this point, I would like to remind everyone that these things are scattered all over the city and IU's campus to be accessed at any time in any scenario by college students who don't have helmets. A higher injury rate than motorcycles. Okay, next slide, please. This next slide, this next study is very recent, coming out in the last month. It was conducted by the Centre for Trauma Sciences at Queen Mary University of London. It was published by the British Medical Journal. It was a nationwide study. It found that e-scooter riders were more likely to be admitted to a major trauma center or a critical care unit than cyclists at a whopping 60% compared to 47%. It was also found that e-scooter riders were typically younger than cyclists. As a reminder, e-scooter companies mainly profit off the business of college students, and this is why they primarily target campuses to unload their scooters onto. Next slide, please. These are studies that go over e-scooter restriction attempts, much like the ones being proposed today. One study covered the effects of banning scooters at night. That study found that this ban had no significant effect. The other study covered restrictions in Oslo, which included restricted hours and a reduction in fleet size from 20,000 scooters to 2,667 scooters per company. This resulted in a decrease of e-scooter injuries by almost 50%, showing that the only way to get rid of e-scooter injuries is by getting rid of e-scooters. Next slide, please. Now, I want to talk to you guys about the specific guideline that was proposed and why it's there, because I am the reason that it's there. Next slide, please. Lime offers no details about their helmets from giveaways anywhere online. This is a picture I found on eBay. Next slide, please. By going through import records, I found that in September of 2022, Neutron Holdings, which is Lime, received a shipment of helmets from Moon Helmet International. Upon visiting Moon Helmet's website, a helmet model, the MTV12, can be found. It is identical to the Lime helmet, which means that this is the model they ordered. Next slide, please. I emailed the company at the email list on their website and requested a CPSC certificate for the MTV12, which they are required to have on file. They gave me a PDF of a CPSC certificate a couple hours after my email. The document appeared to be a genuine certificate from Intertek, which is a well-established company with testing laboratories internationally. The CPSC-accredited labs lists several Intertek laboratories, but none of them match the address from the PDF. I even checked Intertek's official website, but still no location matched the address on the PDF. Next slide, please. So this is the PDF that they sent me. I went ahead and I Googled that address, and what popped up were multiple PDFs with Intertek certification formatting. None were for recognizable websites. They provide easy basis photo shopping safety certificate. Next slide, please. This is an example of the results that came up. And the, the address that was given in that PDF is not an address of a legitimate testing site, which proves that. It was a fake certificate, which means that these helmets are not CPSC certified. Next slide, please. It is a prohibited act under Section 19 of the CPSA to offer for sale, distribute, and commerce, or import into the United States a bicycle helmet that does not meet one of the interim standards under 16 CFR 1203. It was illegal for Lime to import into the United States and give away these helmets because they are not CPSC certified bike helmets. To reiterate, this was illegal. I sent this information to several individuals from both the city and IU and was able to stop the helmet giveaways before the third day. In the news, it said that this happened because when inspected, a label inside the helmet says "not for use in motor vehicles." But the truth is, these helmets weren't even inspected until I warned officials about what I found. If the city's response to a company illegally handing out unsafe helmets to your own community is slapping their wrist with a guideline that says, "Don't do that again," I am just baffled. It is clear not only that these vehicles are inherently unsafe, but the companies behind them do not care about the community's safety one bit. Next slide, please. Now, to get into why we're seeing such high injury rates, we actually have to look at the stability and physics of the vehicles themselves. Bicycles have large inflated wheels. The fact that they're inflated improves their suspension, which improves stability, and the fact that they're large allows for them to go over obstacles and potholes on the road with ease compared to e-scooters that have small tires and airless tires, which, by the way, they keep airless because it is cheaper and easier to maintain, even though it's not as safe. Next slide, please. It's also worth noting that the rider position plays a huge role. In bicycles, you are seated, you are low to the ground, and there is minimal variation in rider position. In e-scooters, you are standing, your center of gravity is much higher, and there is a lot of variation in rider position. Now, this is the part that I did hear quoted in the other guideline presentation, but it was framed as if this is a thing that is just a perception. It is not just a perception. There are plenty of studies and plenty of data backing up the fact that e-scooters are more dangerous than bicycles. And the biggest reason is because due to the structure, on bicycles, you are more likely to have a lateral fall, which is a fall where your arm or your leg is more likely to be impacted first and impacted the most. Whereas in e-scooters, you are a lot more likely to be thrown over the handlebars.
Ms. Merrill, you're, you're actually beyond your five minutes. Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Mr. Lucas, just for my record... Mr. Lucas, just for my record keeping, do we have any more on Zoom?
We have one other hand raised on Zoom at the moment.
Let's come here in chambers, please. Welcome. Please state your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
My name's Mark Hagerty. Today, I found out is Vietnam Veterans Day. And I'm a Vietnam veteran. And I'd like to ask if there's anything that you all could possibly do, and the audience, too, to give aging veterans dental care. Veterans don't get dental care, and people that are, I'm going on 75 now, and people my age are losing their teeth, and the infections spread to their body. And many older veterans are dying that way because they can't get any dental care. So all of you who may be listening within this realm, please give aging veterans dental care. Okay. I read, I'm reading here, "Heroic Principal Ditched Her Zoom Call and Rushed Straight For the Nashville Shooter." Well, I'm a first responder. I want my Democratic Party, which is everybody here, to be talking about what we can do to ban assault weapons in Bloomington and not be given me the answer that our hands are tied. Because as a first responder, as a veteran, I think you can do better. And when people die in our jail, we have multiple deaths in custody, I want to see a conversation amongst the Democratic Partians. The party I helped start here, when this was a Republican town, I can't imagine what would happen if an IU student died in that jail the way that these cutters keep dying in our jail repeatedly. This should be the safest place in our county. When your kid gets arrested and put in jail, you should go, "Thank you. He's not in danger. He's not driving drunk. He's not getting into trouble. He's safe now. He's in jail." I'm not worried about how dirty the jail is. Oh, I've been worried about it, and I've been active about it, and I've been in court about it. But the court doesn't want to hear about it, never did. The judges have private meetings. You can't get into their meetings, even though they're meetings about public policy and should ascribe to the sunshine laws. They know what's happening in the jail. They know that the women in the drunk tank are held for weeks there with no blankets and the cold. It's cold in the drunk tank. They know that it's unclean and what the problems are. When four people, four young men, cutters, not IU students, first responders, essential workers, die over here in our jail, I want the Democratic Party talking about it. I want the discussions at lunch to be about, "Why are people dying at the jail?" And all of them after the recovery program was canceled. And the criminal justice system got this huge influx of money, so what should we do with it? Kick the community's recovery program out and install something from Centristone and the court system, which has been so successful so far. Now, of course I'm angry. Of course I'm fucking angry! Goddamn, we got kids dying. We don't look at our gun laws and stand in opposition to a tyranny against public safety by political people, by politicians who are endangering your children's lives in school by not having adequate laws on the books to protect us from guns. And my fellow Democrats tell me that their hands are tied. Oh, my hands aren't tied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. Mr. Lucas, do we have additional comment here in chambers? Oh, okay, please approach the podium. And if you could state your name for the record, please?
My name is Scott Farrell. I moved to Bloomington 12 years ago. I have genetic eye disease. I knew the day was coming that I would have to give up my wheels and get my car up. I moved down here for, so I could be safe and have accessibility. In Indianapolis, I would have had to move way far out of the bus line and everything else to be safe. That's why I moved here. And it all worked out just great until these scooters show up. In the past 12 months, I have been injured twice related to these scooters. The first time was at Seventeenth and Dunn, waiting for the bus by the credit union, when a student almost ran me over and then grabbed a tree limb so that he wouldn't hit it, and then let it, and it lacerated my eye. I also have fallen down on Walnut and cracked my pelvis. I, my body and my safety is not an experiment. Alls I've heard is a whole bunch of conjecture about, "We'll try to fix this problem." In the meanwhile, I've been injured twice. The other thing that's very alarming, although it does seem very logical that the sit-down scooters and e-bikes are safer for the people using them, they are worse for the citizens on the sidewalks. Number one, the people are always going faster on the sidewalk, on the sit-down things. They create bigger problems when they're just, you know, laying on the sidewalk. And if you go to pick one up, in October, I went to pick one up. It was a Lime e-bike thing, or maybe an e-scooter, I don't know, sit-down scooter. I don't know the difference. But you can't even roll them. I took my next-door neighbor to the library, got her out of the car in the wheelchair, and the Lime sit-down thing was there. And I went to pick it up so I could move it out of the way, and they won't roll when they're locked. So this whole idea of the sit-down thing being better for the pedestrian and the bus people, it is a fallacy. They take up more room. Just this morning, as I was walking my dog, I had him sat. My dog's tail got run over by an e-bike thing. That one was the bird. So, you know, I am all for everything green. I am the greenest person you will ever find. And I never thought that I would have to stand up and advocate for my personal safety in the city of Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Go ahead. Welcome. Please share your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Yeah, good evening, council members. My name is Vaughn Welch, and I'm afraid my comments are going to sound a little bit administrative compared to the serious, personal nature of my preceding commenter. But I thank you for a couple of minutes to share my ongoing concerns about the City of Bloomington Capital Improvements, Inc., or CBCI. In the past, I've shared my concerns specifically about the Waldron Arts Center, but tonight I'm here as a citizen sharing concerns broadly. And first, I want to thank the council for appointing their member to the CBCI board. I respect the position that the four-to-one split seems fundamentally unrepresentative of the citizens and the council. But I have concerns about the transparency of the CBCI, and I think having another citizen's eyes on its activities will be helpful to the public. I also want to acknowledge the observations of Councilmember Sandberg earlier about the arts being in scope of the CBCI. And it's not obvious to me how much arts expertise there is on that current CBCI board, so I could see a strong argument for adding a couple additional members to the CBCI board. The transparency of the CBI continues to be one of my big concerns. As the mayor shared, the draft bylaws were made public, I think, several months ago now. And last month, a partial CBCI board formally adopted some bylaws. As far as I can tell, the adopted bylaws have not been made public. They were not in the meeting materials for that meeting on March 3rd. I cannot find them on the CBCI website. So it's unclear to me at this point what the actual adopted bylaws of the CBCI are. I also have to say I was surprised tonight to hear the mayor share that there will be a CBCI board meeting next week. This is not on their website, not on their calendar. I continue to be concerned. And while I'm not aware that the administration has held any of their promised stakeholder meetings to get input on the CBCI, they did receive input on their bylaws. And I'm, let's say, maybe a little hopeful here. Mayor Hamilton earlier stated some ways that the CBCI would operate that, to me, seemed like improvements over the draft CBCI bylaws. So I'm hopeful that when I see the adopted ones, they maybe have heated some of the feedback they got, and we'll see that reflected in the actual operational bylaws. I can be hopeful. So until the CBCI addresses these transparency and other oversight issues, I encourage the council to remain vigilant regarding the CBI and be conservative in granting it any authority or resources. I'm very concerned that once any privilege is given to the CBI, the public, this council, and future councils, and even future mayors are going to have a hard time with the oversight and the transparency of what that CBCI does. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Next here in chambers, if you would, please share your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Madam President, for this time. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I first want to commend the work of the ESD, collaborating with Indiana University on these micro-mobility recommendations outlined earlier. And I think it's important to note, we must strike a balance between the benefit and the costs. And I share some of the skepticism of the council on this. I do receive calls and emails from businesses in and around town on the benefit of the scooters. What we need to believe is that they are safe enough and that the accessibility is an issue. Besides what has already been talked about today, just seeing scattering of scooters on somebody who has no disability, it looks bad. Aesthetically, it is not something that's inviting, and it doesn't, I believe, help businesses attract customers. So going back on a couple of the things, and I think some of the recommendations are the right direction. But I think what we have to look at is just adding a few, a little bit more teeth to them. I think as Kirk White from IU noted about a speed limit, putting a governor-installed stand-up limit on the e-scooters of 10 miles per hour, it seems like a no-brainer. We've talked about the limitation of hours on the Dust Till Dawn, and I think probably the 50% of the fleets consisting of non-stand-up scooters is just kind of where we need to go on this. I appreciate their work, but I think the work is not quite done on that. Next up, speaking of climate, I want to express kudos to the administration for spearheading that multi-county climate change alliance, regionalizing the commitment provides a real opportunity to collectively decrease greenhouse emissions, coordinating these local efforts. We not only streamline some resources, but we also become a beacon to inspire other Hoosier communities to do just the same. Speaking of collaboration, the chamber is hosting its next community conversation, Working Better Together luncheon on Tuesday, the 4th. That is next week at Fountain Square Ballroom. Doors will open for that at 11:00 AM with the program starting at 11:50. This panel will be discussing why the community such as ours is rich in resources, why we struggle to really collaborate to address issues of housing, criminal justice reform, and convention center expansion. This event is open to the public. Finally, Monday, April 10th, is our next ElectConnect Mayoral Forum on Business for Democratic Candidates, which will be held at Indiana University's President's Hall in Franklin Hall. This will be a free event to everybody with doors opening at 5:30 and the program beginning at 6:20. There are a lot of mayoral forums, so why this one? I think the historic venue remains a real jewel setting to be sure to provide an indelible experience for this monumental election. Our motto is "Better Business, Better Community" at the chamber, and we will be discussing topics important to the economic vitality and quality of life here in Bloomington. And there will be complimentary appetizers and a cash bar. I want to thank the candidates who participated and the public who attended our last ElectConnect Council edition last week. It was very successful. For all chamber events, please register at BloomingtonChamber.org, and I thank you for your time tonight and your work that you do on behalf of the community.
Thank you, Mr. MG. Mr. Lucas, I believe we had one person left on Zoom?
We currently have two folks on Zoom that would like to speak.
Okay, could you queue up one, please?
Yes, next is Natalia Galvin, who has also provided slides and asked me to share those.
Ms. Galvin, welcome. Please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Thanks. Yeah, is Mr. Lucas ready?
Not just, now they are.
Apologies.
Okay, I'll just, yeah, I'll wait till he's ready. Okay, thank you. My name is Natalia Galvin. I live in the Near West Side. I prepared a PowerPoint presentation tonight. Because of time, I will highlight the main points. Since city council last discussed this matter, I have suffered a significant and rather unexpected loss in my family and contemplated whether to speak further on this issue. The truth is that much of this PowerPoint was prepared before my loss. Since I am one of the few residents that will come up in front of city council and continue to say, "The situation is not okay," I decided to present tonight. Mr. Alexander has displayed a diminished ability to carry out the duties of a traffic commissioner. Next slide. What are the duties of a member of the traffic commission? I want to highlight the last two points specifically in this presentation. Next slide. After the city council meeting on November 3rd, I got into a Twitter exchange with Mr. Alexander. I engaged with him, strongly disagreeing with his tweet about council member Piedmont Smith after her vote on the stop sign issue and Maxwell and Sheridan. I made public comment in support of the resident who advocated for the stop sign. And although Mr. Alexander didn't directly ask me why I supported that stop sign, I will speak on it now. I didn't support that stop sign because of the neighborhood it is in. I supported the stop sign and the effort because I have been personally impacted by the importance of the stop sign as it determines liability in traffic matters. By Mr. Seabor's account, that intersection would take years to properly reimagine, and in my mind, the stop sign was a temporary solution until that street was redesigned. That nuance is important because Mr. Alexander would later direct the, quote, "Haters gonna hate, and Bloomington Democrats gonna lick the shit out from between Elm Heights neighborhood neighbors' ass cheeks," to me. That is for me. Mr. Alexander would continue to reference me in the months to come, and the last comment he tagged me on was from March 16th. I have not made a comment to him on any social media since November 3rd, nor will I again. On that day, Mr. Alexander stated, quote, "With all due respect, taking things away from Elm Heights is exactly how the rest of the city gets help," end quote. As a commissioner myself, I felt that tweet exemplified a diminished ability to receive complaints having to do with traffic matters fairly." Next slide. Slide four is a timeline of events. I went to Councilmember Scamblerie's constituent Zoom the following Saturday after my exchange with Mr. Alexander. I asked for a recommendation at the meeting of how to handle the situation and immediately emailed council leadership at the time per her guidance. Next slide. Slide five is a continuation of events, and I was told that this matter would be addressed. I assumed it would be addressed at the next reappointment, a discussion about Mr. Alexander's tweets, at least during council deliberations. However, there was no discussion, and at the end, and at the January 18th meeting, Mr. Alexander was reappointed. I learned at the Sandberg Rollup Constituent Zoom on January 21st that the council president would not address the situation without more documentation. Next slide. So on January 21st, I sent the email I previously sent on November 5th to all the members of the city council. It is my estimation that this was the first time all city council members received my email, that it was not forwarded by council leadership in 2022 to the other members of council because some of the members of council said that they were unaware of these issues regarding Mr. Alexander prior to voting on his reappointment with the traffic commission. Next slide. I highlight Mr. Esken's comment about the situation being, quote, "an extra drain on the public's energy," end quote. It is much more than that. Next slide. Although some Bloomington residents can make light over Mr. Alexander's language, that language was directed at me and other city residents. Despite weeks and months after our initial Twitter exchange, he continues to reference me and other residents who he deems as oppositional to his views. Mr. Alexander attacked a friend of mine simply for liking a tweet as referenced in slide eight. The next six slides highlight- The next six slides highlight Mr. Alexander's personal attacks and mentions. I'm not surprised that I am one of the few residents who is willing to comment. Most of the people that may comment against him are disparaged by him on social media, and some receive handwritten letters at their home. These are not standalone letters. Both people who receive such letters were also attacked and disparaged by Mr. Alexander on social media. Because of my family loss, I did not do a comprehensive search of all of Mr. Alexander's social media accounts. I felt that seven pages illustrate my point. We can slip, we can skip to slide 14. So how do old statements impact one's ability to serve? These are not old comments. Oh, I think slide 14. Yeah. These are not old comments. These are comments from the past five months. A next slide. Bloomington residents who are familiar with, oh, next slide. Next slide. Okay. Bloomington residents who are familiar with Mr. Alexander implored him to understand that his social media behavior or words are abusive and offensive. Next slide. For all those reasons I'm here tonight. Beyond making statements like supporting taking things away from the neighborhood, equally as troubling is Mr. Alexander's persistent harassment of people he perceives as thinking differently than he does. And some Bloomington residents, including me, no longer feel like they can get a fair hearing in front of the Traffic Commission. Thank you.
Council, I know we are at, at the 20-minute mark. We have two additional comments. May I have your indulgence and finish up with these two individuals? Okay. Clerk Bolden, if you would, please.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing for additional time. I didn't stand up at the podium because I'm also trying to take notes. So I wanted to touch base with the council because at the State House, the session, we've seen an unprecedented number of bills passed that attack LGBTQ+ same-gender-loving Hoosiers. These bills include things like House Bill 1608, which is a "Don't Say Gay" bill, Senate Bill 489, which bans essential medical care for trans youth, there are books on censorship and denial of gender-affirming care, and even a bill that makes it illegal for child services to consider a failure to provide a safe and affirming environment for trans youth when looking into abusive home environments. Friday is Trans Visibility Day, and on Sunday, April 2nd, at 2:00 PM, there will be a rally at the Monroe County Courthouse Square, which is called "In Hate: Elevate and Celebrate Trans Joy by Protect Our People." I don't normally make public comment, but I did want to encourage all of you to come to the rally and to stand up with our community, in front of our community, and let them know that we support our LGBTQ+ community and that we are not in support of the latest bills that are coming out of the State House. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden. And Mr. Lucas, I believe we have one more on Zoom?
We have two on Zoom at the moment. Next is Chuck Livingston.
Okay. Mr. Livingston, welcome. Could you please confirm your name for the record?
Thank you. It's Chuck Livingston. There's been an awful lot said about various topics today that I didn't anticipate. I'll try to be brief on both topics. With respect to scooters, I want to thank the council members who are going to take this issue seriously. With the lack of time, I'll talk about it more in constituent meetings. I do want to mention two things. One is that I will send you links to meetings that were held in the council chambers four years ago. For instance, when Beth Rupp, the Director of IU Student Health, pleaded with the council to control scooters, she told you about the serious accidents she's seen, maybe some clips of Alex Crowley talking to them, what he had to say then. And finally, about scooters, there was talk of cost. When a scooter sits for days blocking a handicap ramp, what's the cost of that? It's clear the administration doesn't appreciate the cost of that. It's, it costs them a lot. It has costed the council a lot. It has costed this whole city a lot. I find one scooter on one handicap ramp intolerable. The fact that it's continued is, says something, tells me something I wish I didn't know. With regards to Natalia Galvin's comments about Greg Alexander, I want to just mention one of his quotes. He told the council in person, roughly half the sidewalk committee budget in the past 15 years was spent on Rallo's district. I don't know where he got that figure. I've looked for it myself. Maybe you know. I know that Mark Strasberg produced a report where he said that half the projects had taken place in Councilmember Rallo's district, but he made no distinction between $10,000 projects and $300,000 projects. So if at some point, Mr. Alexander makes a presentation to the council, he can explain where he's getting his figures. The following line from his comment was, "With all due respect, taking things away from Elm Heights is exactly how the rest of the city should get help." Well, Elm Heights Neighborhood Association is one of the largest in Bloomington, if not the largest. It's, it runs from Third Street Park, the Boys and Girls Club. It includes fraternities. It includes optometry school, includes a shopping center at Eagleson and Third. It borders on Bryant Park. Looking at Mr. Strasberg's data, I can find in the last 20 years, two projects in Elm Heights that were covered by the Sidewalk Committee. There was a half a block in, on South Downs, the very southeast corner, and two blocks of Maxwell, at Maxwell and Sheridan. Twenty years, two projects in the largest, one of the most pedestrian-used neighborhoods in the community. I've never campaigned for more funds from the Sidewalk Committee for Elm Heights. I know that every neighborhood in this city is in desperate need for funds. I've never heard my friends and neighbors go to the Sidewalk Committee demanding more funds. But the fact is, less than 5% of the funds handed out by the Sidewalk Committee went to Elm Heights in the last 20 years. His comment, "With all due respect, taking things away from Elm Heights is exactly how the rest of the city gets help." Well, if that doesn't represent prejudice against Elm Heights and render him as an inappropriate member of a traffic commission that's supposed to make unbiased judgments, I don't know what is. So I hope you soon correct the situation. Until you do, I won't be attending Traffic Commission meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Mr. Lucas?
Yes, next is Eric.
Welcome, if you would, please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Eric Oath, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak as a member of the public this evening. The prior and present comments and testimony of numerous members of our community are materially necessary, sufficient, and convincing to inform and support council action and removal of a current Traffic Commission appointee. I want to sincerely thank Ms. Galvin for her forthright and brave comments. There are members of our community who have been negatively impacted and harmed by Mr. Alexander's statements and actions as a member of the Traffic Commission who no longer feel comfortable speaking to the common council or the Traffic Commission. I hope you understand what has been and is being manifest. The common council has the authority to rescind the appointment in question, and I'm speaking tonight to respectfully request that a majority of the council vote to support a motion to remove. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oath, and thank you to the council for allowing some extra time to...
I just have one short comment from Sam Dove that came in through the chat. If you'd allow me to read that. Mr. Dove says he has issues with scooters. I don't like scooters blocking sidewalks. It's unsafe for the public. Public needs to stop blocking sidewalks. The public just dropped scooters, and they need to take care of it. I see people leave scooters downtown and on sidewalks. That's it.
Thank you. That concludes our first period of public comment. Let's move now to appointments to boards and, whoops, to appointments to boards and commissions. Are there any appointments from Team A?
There are.
Councilmember Smith?
I would like to propose that we, is there a certain format? I'm supposed to say this in?
You...
All right, I'm gonna make a motion that we appoint to the commission on the status of black males, Caleb Horr, to seat C1, for the Commission on Aging, to appoint Rob Council to seat C2. And I think that does it for us.
Seat C3, I think you mean.
Seat C3, yes. Thank you.
Yes, and is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, those, and we appreciate the service of those individuals. Are there any appointments from Team B?
Madam Chair, I move that the council reappoint Mike Allen to seat C1 of the Digital Underground Advisory Committee, to appoint DeJana Askew to seat C3 on the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Celebration Commission, and to appoint Cole Moore to seat C4 of the Traffic Commission.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes, so. And, yes.
I move to remove Luke Swain from seat C3 on the Environmental Commission due to non-attendance pursuant to Bloomington Municipal Code 2.08.020, paragraph 4. In making this motion, I ask that before a formal decision to remove is reached, that the council give Mr. Swain at least five business days to provide any extenuating circumstances in writing in response to this particular motion. Thank you.
Thank you. And there is a, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Lucas, do you have any additional guidance for us or commentary?
Just that because of the research that went into the previous motions for removal related to the Traffic Commission member, council staff now recommends that a motion for removal for any reason be shared with that particular appointee and that they be provided at least five business days to respond in writing. So I would suggest any formal action on this motion be postponed until April the 12th, due to the council's earlier meeting next week following on Tuesday.
Councilmember Volan?
To note that Mr. Swain's last attendance was the September meeting, and has missed the next six meetings in a row. It only takes three for this motion to be in order. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so we will take up that motion again on April 12th.
I would suggest April 12th. I realize this may be overkill. Several attempts have been made to contact Mr. Swain, but to, to be on the right side of our code, I would suggest April 12th is the next date for the council to act.
I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Are there any appointments from Team C?
Yes, there are. We have appointments for the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability and for the Parking Commission. And if I could just briefly make a public service announcement here, we do need merchants to apply for the Parking Commission. So if we could just kind of put that out there, that if you are a merchant in the city and would like to apply for the Parking Commission, we would appreciate those applications. But we do have recommendations this evening for the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability. We would like to appoint Alex Hakes to seat C1 and to Justin Vassal to seat C2. We would also like to appoint Michael Schnoll to seat C2 of the Parking Commission.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes, and we extend our thanks to all those residents who are serving on boards and commissions for us. Is there additional business under boards and commissions?
Madam President, apologies before you move on. The motion to remove Luke Swain from the Environmental Commission, I don't know that that was actually postponed. The council might want to have a motion to actually postpone action on that until the...
The removal of Luke Swain motion to the council meeting of April 12th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We will take that up next at the April 12th meeting, so. Councilmember Rallo?
Madam President, I have a revised motion. I move that Greg Alexander be removed from seat C5 of the Traffic Commission for cause under Bloomington Municipal Code 2.08.020, paragraph 4, for the following conduct that demonstrates Mr. Alexander's diminished ability and fitness to perform the duties of his appointment. Statements at issue, the following statements were made on social media site Twitter on the following dates. On November 3rd, 2022, in response to a Twitter thread regarding allocation of city funds for sidewalks, user @GregAlexander8 replies, quote, "With all due respect, taking things away from Elm Heights is," emphasis on is, "exactly how the rest of the city gets help," unquote. On November 5th, 2022, in response to a Twitter thread in which user @clerkmoore used the words, quote, "Punching through" to describe a planned infrastructure project within Elm Heights, user Greg Alexander8 replies, quote, "I would really like to know, it sounds like they're going to, going to savagely penetrate your neighborhood, and I want to know what they're going to use to do that," unquote. On November 16th, 2022, user @GregAlexander8 tweeted the following, quote, "Haters gonna hate and Bloomington Democrats gonna lick the shit out from behind Elm Heights, from between Elm Heights neighbors' ass cheek," unquote. The Traffic Commission's duties are listed in Bloomington Municipal Code, section 2.12.070, paragraph 1, and are as follows. Purpose duties, it shall be the duty of the commission, and to this end, it shall have the authority within the limits of the funds at its disposal to coordinate traffic activities, to carry out educational activities in traffic matters, to supervise the preparation and publication of traffic reports, to receive complaints having to do with traffic matters, and to recommend to the common council and to the appropriate city officials ways and means for improving traffic conditions and the administration and enforcement of traffic regulations. The statements diminish Mr. Alexander's ability and fitness to perform these duties of appointment in one or more of the following ways, and there are three. Number one, bias. The statements on Twitter from November 2nd, sorry, 3rd, 2022 demonstrate bias against one of Bloomington's neighborhoods. The statement advocates for taking city resources away from this neighborhood. This impacts Mr. Alexander's ability to impartially discharge the enumerated duties in Bloomington Municipal Code 2.12.070. The following duties are specifically impacted. One, receiving complaints from residents of this neighborhood, and two, recommending ways and means for improving traffic conditions and the administration and enforcement of traffic regulations within this neighborhood. Okay, the following way, number two, is chilling public engagement. Members of the public have come forward during public comment portions of council meetings, including the regular sessions on January 25th, 2023, and February 1st, 2023, and the Special Committee on Council Processes meeting on February 20th, 2023, to express concern that Mr. Alexander's behavior has discouraged Bloomington residents from voicing traffic concerns and interacting with the Traffic Commission. The behavior in question includes Mr. Alexander's statements on Twitter from November 5th and 16th, 2022, that use references to sexual acts and sexual violence to ridicule public concerns about public infrastructure projects. Members of the public have stated that they feel targeted, bullied, intimidated by Mr. Alexander. This impacts Mr. Alexander's ability to engage with the public as it, as is required by several enumerated duties of the Traffic Commission, including, one, carrying on educational activities, and two, receiving complaints regarding traffic matters. Following way, number three, is bullying and harassment that would be subject to disciplinary procedures under the City of Bloomington Employee Personnel Manual. Volunteers are subject to the City of Bloomington policy prohibiting harassment in the workplace in section 3.04 of the, of the Personnel Manual, in the Personnel Manual. Commission service is a volunteer position within the city. The Personnel Manual defines several behaviors that constitute, can, conduct for which employees may discharge... may discharge immediately, including, quote, "Any action, whether or not a violation of regularly established rule, regulation, or policy is so deleterious to efficient city operations or the public interest that discipline or discharge could reasonably expected to result," unquote. Mr. Alexander's behavior, including statements on Twitter on November 5th and 16th, 2022, that ridicule public concerns with references to metaphors of sexual violence and depict graphic sexual acts, have interfered with public engagement with the Traffic Commission and the city. Members of the public have come forward to express feeling intimidated, harassed, and bullied. The chilling effect of these statements have had on public engagement with, with the city, and Traffic Commission is so deleterious to public interest that discipline or discharge could reasonably be expected to result under the City of Bloomington's Personnel Manual. To be clear, I do not make this motion because Mr. Alexander's substantive criticisms of the city, the council, or myself. Rather, I make this motion out of concern about Mr. Alexander's fitness to carry out the duties of his appointment to the Traffic Commission. In making this motion, I ask that the council make no formal decision tonight, but instead give Mr. Alexander at least five business days to provide any written comments he would like to offer the council in response to this particular motion. Thank you, and I would like to thank Ash Kula for the work in preparing that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. So, Mr. Lucas, is there, do you have any comments or guidance for us beyond the additional five-day period that was referenced?
Same, same recommendation, that the council should take no formal action until Mr. Alexander has an opportunity to respond to this particular motion, as you did previously. You're, you're welcome to debate this as needed tonight, or you could simply move to postpone until, I would recommend again, April the 12th.
Okay. Is there, Councilmember Volin?
How many times are we gonna do this? I mean, Mr. Rallo has redone his, his motion twice now. He's built his argument into the motion when it could have been stated much more simply, and he could have then recited these items, but okay, fine, let's take the motion as it I mean, the remedy should still be the same. I made the motion to remove Mr. Swain because it's very clearly defined in code tonight. I've made the motion tonight because it's very clearly defined in code what we are clear about removing someone for cause for attendance. We are not clear about how someone should be removed. We've established in previous debates that Mr. Alexander's tweets, first of all, there's only three of them, they were in November, there's been no citation of further tweets, so we're still litigating the same case, but they, we heard, and I'm sure, I hope Mr. Rallo was in attendance at the Council Committee on Processes, the last meeting where Sarah Ryder Band attended, and praised to the high heavens Mr. Alexander's presence on the Traffic Commission, that his performance has been exemplary, she says. Now, the fact that Mr. Alexander in his, in his life outside the Traffic Commission has made controversial statements is worth discussing, but there has been no citation of any, the, the accusations made by Mr. Rallo do not include anything that happened in a Traffic Commission meeting. The remedy is for the Committee on Processes, which was set up at the beginning of this year, to address questions just like this, was barely set up before we could address an issue like this. We should have something more specific in code to address situations like this, all right? Social media is notoriously assessable. If Mr. Rallo really wants to litigate the action of anybody who ever tweeted on social media, we should have that conversation in the committee too, but I will note that there is no boss, the analogy that somehow volunteers should be treated like employees of the city forgets the idea that who's in charge of that volunteer? Is it the council? Are we gonna really have to give performance reviews to every member of a board or commission? I think that Mr. Rallo doesn't realize that he's been opening a can of worms, that it just, this motion, this type of motion has been inappropriate since the first one he made, it made, it's still just as inappropriate, and he should be looking for other ways to prevent such things from happening in the future. But I guess we're gonna litigate this case until the, the activists in Mr. Rallo's district are happy. I will point out finally that Elm Heights Neighborhood Association is not a democratic body. Elm Heights Neighborhood is a large neighborhood that no one can claim they represent, except perhaps Mr. Rallo, although I can claim that as well, because I live in Elm Heights and I'm currently representing a portion of that district. But otherwise, there is no, I mean, the, the claims that people are making about who they represent are very broad and vague. They say, everybody thinks like us, or we represent all of Elm Heights. None of this is true. So, I wish that Mr. Rallo would withdraw this motion in favor of working through the committee that he is a member of to come up with rules to prevent such things from happening again. We need it, we need those rules. We do not need to be continually making ad hoc judgments about individual members of boards and commissions. It's unprecedented, and this has got to stop. I, I wish that he would withdraw this motion before we have to vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you, additional comments? Councilmember Sandberg, then Councilmember Flaherty.
This would be a question, would it be appropriate to move the question of postponing until the 12th at this time, or do we need to have a further discussion about this?
I think we have a couple more comments that are forthcoming. Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. The, the item number three enumerated as the demonstrating a way in which Mr. Alexander's ability and fitness to perform his duties have, have been impacted is somewhat new in the sense that when the committee considered this, we did not have legal guidance from our attorneys at that time, that the Employee Personnel Manual would, would apply to board and commission members. There was discussion about making it apply in the future through adopting that in some way via code, or in, in practice with the onboarding of board and commission members, so that's, that's novel or, or new to me. I was wondering if I could get any clarification either from the maker of the motion or from our staff attorneys as to the application of the Employee Personnel Manual to all board and commission appointees?
Yes, happy, happy to respond to that. I think in continuing to work with Councilmember Rallo to put together a motion that captured his intent, council staff continue to review the Personnel Manual. It does state that volunteers are subject to the city's policy prohibiting harassment in the workplace, to the extent that members on boards and commissions could be considered volunteers. I believe Mr. Rallo felt that that was relevant to the council's consideration, and an additional reason that Mr. Alexander might be on notice that this sort of behavior would be subject to some sort of response.
Follow-up, if that's okay. You, you just said, to the extent that board and commission members could be considered volunteers. Is it your legal opinion that they are considered volunteers? I mean, we don't have to answer that now, but that's my question. I'm, I'm trying to do what's legally correct with respect to this, and I think there is some, there is significant risk in a number of the accusations that have been made of running afoul of Mr. Alexander's rights, including constitutional rights, so I want to be very careful about what's being said and what the argument being advanced is, and that's, I'd like to dig in more to that. Again, you don't necessarily have to add more at this time.
No, happy to, to research that further. I don't know that the manual specifies, but we can try to get some additional information to the council on that question.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I simply want closed caption to be engaged. If someone can do that.
Mr. Lucas, could you take care of that, or Deputy Attorney Kula?
Because we're talking facts and I can't hear everything from all places.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional comments? Is there any additional motion then?
Yes, I would move that the question of removal be postponed until the council's regular session on April 12th.
Is there a second?
I had one comment, may I make it in response, before we move forward on that motion? Thank you. Well, just, just to say that the topics that involve Mr. Alexander as a Traffic Commission member and the public are topics that are relevant to the city and Traffic Commission. They're to be held, they're, they're considered by that commission. So I do think it is relevant. And then in terms of, how many times do we have to do this? Recall that I voted against Mr. Alexander's appointment to the commission. I then sought to correct what I thought was a mistake by offering a motion that the council decided to, to form a committee at, at the advisement of Councilmember Volin, and then at the committee that was held, they suggested a revised motion. And then at the former meeting where I introduced a motion, two council members were not in attendance, and I was advised at that point that, by my colleagues, that to revise my motion further. So that's where we, why we end up where we are today, why I've offered multiple motions with respect to my council members. Thank you.
Remember Volin I saw first, then Councilmember Sims?
I wanted to correct my colleague. I referred, I suggested that the motion be referred to a committee that had just been created to tackle topics like this. The committee was not invented in order to address this motion. It was preconceived. It was a special committee, not a standing one, but I said that's what the committee was for, exactly items like this. But I would gently suggest that we should not be short-circuiting our processes for the sake of an ad hoc decision, and I would think that my colleague, who is the parliamentarian of this body, would be keeping that sort of thing in mind before making this motion that he's made three times now. Thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. With respect to one of our commenters, and I'll just use her name, Natalia Galvin, I have the utmost respect, and I love working with her in social issues out in the city, but I think she may have been correct to say on the night of that vote that I wasn't present. I, I don't recall, but it seems that I do remember that vote. I do remember an abstention, and I do remember a vote, a no vote, and, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but the point I'm trying to make there is that in the future, I don't know what the basis on the, the abstention or the no vote was, but I do know that in a motion to appoint, then there is room for discussion, and if we would have discussed all of that that night, we probably would have not appointed him and not be in the position that we are in. It's likely that, I'm not saying we would have, but it's likely that we could have avoided all of this, potentially, and decided it then. So I just wanted to make that comment. We'll discuss more on April 12th, I think, I'm assuming, but I just wanted to get that out there. If, if, if they, if I would have been aware of all this stuff that night, that would have been a lot easier. I'm not so sure I'd have voted yes to, to, to do that, but I just think it'd have been more timely and appropriate at that time. Thank you.
Additional comment before we go back to this motion? See, oh, Councilmember Rosenberg.
I, I was actually going to comment on the same thing as Councilmember Sims. I think it is incredibly unfortunate that three, at least three council members knew about this when the recommendation was on the table. It came up at two constituent meetings, and no one brought it to our attention. I find, I find that very, very unfortunate.
Additional comment? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, since we don't always anticipate what appointments are coming, since then I've spoken to the clerk's office, and she's agreed to give us a heads-up in terms of the appointments that are, that are forthcoming. That way we know, you know, what's likely to occur. Now, in this case, it was, it happened, decisions were made, I think by Team B, literally moments before our meeting started, so that's something to keep in mind too, that those, perhaps those meetings shouldn't, shouldn't occur immediately prior to council meetings.
Additional comments? Councilmember Volin?
I'm just gonna point out that it's entirely within the control of this body to, to how we manage our process, and Mr. Rallo's concern, I just, we've already had, we're, it's 9:30 now, and we have yet to even get to second readings. We have allowed people to go well beyond the 20 minutes for public comment, we allowed ad hoc an extra-long report on scooters. When are we going to get a control under our processes? Isn't that what the committee was for? This continued ad hoc, well, let's just indulge, I mean, we could control the amount of time that people speak, we could be limiting it, and we don't. We don't. So, to hear suddenly that, you know, it's not sudden, it's not sudden, I've said my piece. Thank you.
Additional comments? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion's on the table to postpone until April 12th, it needs a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any, is this discussion is possible on the motion to postpone, correct, or no?
The motion to postpone is debatable to the extent you need to debate whether to postpone. Sorry, I don't know that I heard your question.
This motion to postpone is debatable, correct?
To, to the extent you need to decide. Whether to postpone.
Whether to postpone, correct, okay. Comments? Okay. Madam Clerk, will you please call the role on the motion to postpone? I surprised you with that, sorry. Councilmember Rosenberg?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scandolory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
And that's nine zero. We will take that matter up again on April 12th. Thank you, everyone. And that takes us to, we have no legislation for second readings and resolutions, that takes us to legislation for first readings.
Madam President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2301 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation Ordinance 2301 to specially appropriate the current balance of the opioid settlement fund to help address the impacts of the opioid crisis on city and county residents. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance appropriates $391,906 of opioid, opioid settlement funds for the purpose of making grants in 2023 to community organizations assisting residents of Bloomington experiencing negative impacts from the opioid crisis.
Madam President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2302 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
I'm gonna, please do, but I will first move to send appropriation ordinance 2301 to our next regular session on April 5th.
Fourth.
Fourth, sorry. Thank you. And we have a motion?
Yes, but no second.
And we need a second on the motion to introduce appropriation ordinance 2302?
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Will all those in favor indicate by saying aye on the motion to introduce?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please read?
Appropriation Ordinance 2302 to specially appropriate funds from the General Fund for Construction of the Trades District Tax Center and Associated Construction Management Services. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance appropriates $3,061,391 from the General Fund to help pay for the construction of the Trades District Tax Center and Associated Construction Management Services secured by the Dimension Mill.
Thank you, and we'll take this up next at our regular session. Thank you, and we'll take this up next at our regular session on April 4 as well. Sorry? Fourth, I thought I said fourth. Sorry. Okay, that brings us to our second of two periods of public comment. Is there, is there any public comment here in chambers? Seeing none, Mr. Lucas, could you extend the invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are members of the public that would like to offer comment now, please let us know by using the raise hand feature, which you can find in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak. I do see one hand raised at the moment.
Okay, please go ahead and call on that person.
We have Jamie.
Welcome. If you would, please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Sure, I won't need that much time. My name is Jamie Scholl, and there's been a discussion on the Nextdoor app that I've been wondering if would be applicable to some of the issues that were talked about tonight, especially when hearing Councilmember Sims speak about not knowing, and Councilmember Rosenberg, not knowing about the issues with Greg Alexander. And someone had posted the question about how much council members make, how much you all earn per year. That was answered on there, and I, it's been a more lengthier discussion, and wondering, for me, how, how much time do each of you all spend attending meetings, serving constituents, and of course, other required duties for your position? And if the less than $20,000 per year actually is a good remuneration for the amount of time and the amount of stresses and very large decisions that you all might make? I know you all can't verbally tell me, but there is that being discussed, and I'm wondering if that, you know, if you had more time to review, if this is closer to not just a part-time position, but something that is requiring a lot more time? Anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Scholl. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone else on Zoom?
No, not that I see.
And I'm not seeing anyone here in chambers? Okay, that'll conclude our second of two periods of public comment this evening, and let's take up matters of council schedule. Mr. Lucas?
Just a reminder that next week's regular session will be held on Tuesday instead of Wednesday, due to Passover, I believe, so just wanted to mention that, and no other notes for tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. If there are no objections?
Move adjournment?
We are adjourned.[1729.91]